Greetings from the new Simply Hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes. We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here. But now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure. Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce.
The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including Mega Backup Cloud Service, Server Colocation, T1, Fiber, Metro Ethernet, as well as telephone services such as Hosted PBX and Digital Voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Thank you for joining us for the April 26, 2021 Falmouth Select Board Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We are conducting this meeting remotely, as we have been for quite some time. There are mechanisms for individuals to participate in real time. Those include going on to the town website, to the Select Board page. And you can see the link to connect to this Zoom meeting. And when you do that, you'll be able to make comments in the chat section, ask to become a panelist and make a comment on the screen. You can also participate by reaching out to us in advance, sending us an email either with a question that you'd like us to address or a comment that you want us to read into the record. We are happy to do either of those things. The goal here is to try to make it as easy as possible for folks to participate in whatever way they are comfortable. So when I call your name, please note if you are present. Sam Patterson?
Patterson here.
Doug Brown?
Brown, present.
Nancy Taylor?
Taylor, present.
Doug Jones?
Jones, present.
Megan English-Braga is present. We also have with us Town Manager Julian Susso and Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson Staub is here in the background as well. So if you would, I will call this meeting to order if you would join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone with recognition tonight?
Well, I think it makes sense to have recognition for the police department seeing as how that's going to be Police Week coming up shortly. We certainly appreciate the work they do. I feel bad that they didn't get their police station work. It was just difficult for us to make a statement in favor. We really didn't have the information as well as the Finance Committee. And I wish I could have supported it. I just didn't, I didn't know anything about it really to really speak up. And I know the chief was disappointed because he copied me on an email about his disappointment with the board's lack of support. And I certainly understand that. I mean, they do need the work done and just missed the mark on being ready to support it.
Great, thank you. And that, oh, go ahead, Sam, I'm sorry.
No, I agree with that 100%. I feel like we should have been better informed and we would have been willing to support that effort. There's no question that that building can be redeveloped, if you will, to make it a more useful police station.
And that is on our agenda. We're going to talk a little bit later on in the agenda about where the process went off sort of target and what didn't go as it should and what we're going to do from there. So I think it's great to include that and that segues right into our proclamation, which is for Police Week. And I'm happy to read it unless somebody else would like to read it. Okay. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which it falls Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the town of Falmouth play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the town of Falmouth, and whereas it is important to all citizens to know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the police department of the town of Falmouth has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service, therefore, we, the Select Board, call upon all citizens of the town of Falmouth and upon all patriotic civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 19 through the 15th, 2021, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, we call upon all citizens of the town of Falmouth to observe Wednesday, May 12th, 2021 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty, especially our own Samuel F. Pierce, who lost his life in the line of duty on August 16th, 1933. I further call upon all citizens in the town of the town of Falmouth to observe a moment of silence on Wednesday, May 12th, 2021, in their honor. In witness whereof, we, Megan English-Braga, Douglas C. Brown, Douglas H. Jones, Samuel H. Patterson, and Nancy R. Taylor, here unto, here unto, set our hand and cause the great seal of the town of Falmouth to be affixed this 26th day of April, 2021.
Patterson, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Great, thank you. Any, we do have other specific announcements about shellfish areas opening, but I'll start by asking if there are any announcements from any members of the board. Okay. And the, are you going to do the announcement, Mr. Susso?
On the shellfish matter?
Yes.
Yes, what I wanted to confirm was the, we had been awaiting information from the Division of Marine Fisheries. And as of today, it had not yet been received. So we have no choice but to carry this to the board's next meeting, awaiting the definitive written confirmation from Marine Fisheries on the shellfish issue.
Thank you.
I guess I would like to make an announcement. I did meet with Chief Smith, the Fire Chief, on Monday. And he updated me as to the hiring. And a lot of people have been asking questions about what is the status of the eight firefighters and the override. And the chief has been successful in offering a job to six of those eight. And he's got six more candidates right now, of which to choose the last two. And so he's finally getting some people on board. And it'll be a while before they come online. But he also has four more in the hiring process that are going to be coming in maybe in June. So things are looking up a little bit to take the pressure off. These firemen are working a lot of overtime to cover these shifts. That 14-man minimum is tough to cover right now with such a short staff. But they're doing their best. But I hope some help comes along soon to give them some relief.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. All right, now we have an opportunity for public comment. And just a reminder for folks, that public comment is an opportunity for individuals to speak for up to two minutes on an item that is not on our agenda this evening. And because it is not on our agenda, we cannot respond back to you. So it's just an opportunity for you bring an issue to light, to make a comment on something that, you know, you care about. And then often what happens is those public comments later manifest in agenda items where we can kind of speak more in-depth about whatever it is. So if you have a public comment, you can let me know in the chat, in the chat function. And I'll just give it one more moment. I don't think we have any. I'll ask, did anyone here get a request to read something into the public comment?
Oh, I did not.
Okay, okay, great. I will keep an eye in case somebody is late in coming to that. Okay, first, under summary of actions. Licenses. Approve application for a change of manager of a second-hand dealer license, Hand-in-Hand Thrift Shop 141 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth. Any questions from the board?
So I move that we approve the use, or the, the new Town Manager, Joy Peruch, of the Falmouth Service Center Thrift Shop.
Okay, new manager.
Second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion? Okay, so a new manager for the thrift shop, Joy Peruch. All those in favor, by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English-Braga, aye. And just a reminder that that's taking over for Brenda Swain, who really was instrumental in getting this amazing resource up and running. It is one of the most dynamic spots in town. You know, it's a great opportunity for people to have those gently-used items really go to great use for other individuals in town. So wonderful resource. But thank you to Joy.
Joy is in attendance in case anybody had any questions or if she wanted to make any comments. But it seems like we haven't heard anything, so.
No, I think we're good. That's an easy one to do. All right, under administrative orders. Vote to approve warrant for annual town election on May 18th, 2021.
I would move approval.
Second, Jones.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye. But I'd also like to point out, just remind people that the precinct three and precinct six are again back at the high school. And there are a lot of precinct, town meeting representative spots that are available by write-in because there are not enough candidates even running for some of the unexpired terms and some of the terms. So you can get together and find some people to vote for you in your precinct.
Yeah, thank you. Great reminder that really, you know, there's no better way to get involved in the community than to start off at town meeting. You get a great education about all the things that come before the town. So if you've been wanting to do that, but, you know, haven't seen that opportunity, Doug is completely right. Now is the time. Take a look. The Clerk's Office can provide you with further information about what you need to do and what openings are available in your precinct. Thank you.
It's making democracy work here in Falmouth.
Yes. Thank you. All right, next, vote, oh, I'm sorry, I think I didn't vote. English-Braga, aye. A vote to, vote to lay out Winthrop Road and refer to the Planning Board for recommendation. Mr. Susso?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll note we have Town Engineer Jim McGlothlin and Public Works Director Peter McConerty in attendance. Should there be any questions? The board will recall that this is on the board's special town meeting warrant for June. We had to IP it because we had not finished all the processes. And subject to the board's vote this evening, it will go to the Planning Board, I believe, tomorrow evening, which would put us on a schedule to allow this to be considered at the June special town meeting coming up. So I certainly recommend a favorable consideration by the board. But if the board would like some additional comments, as I noted, Jim and Peter are here with us also.
Great, thank you. I mean, I think this is something that we're pretty familiar with because we had talked about it before. Does the board feel that they need any further information?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to order of taking for the layout? I think, is that the specific?
Yes.
Yeah.
I would move approval if that's the appropriate term.
Jones, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Thank you. Peter, did we need a specific language?
Just the wording that's in the agenda. If you could please confirm, the vote is to lay out Winthrop Road and refer to the Planning Board for recommendation.
That was the motion that I think Doug Brown made.
That's what I thought.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, next, we have approve the memorandum of understanding with Friends of Falmouth Dogs and grant of license for 150 Black Smith Shop Road. Peter?
Yes, there's a memo in the board's packet. And I'm sure many of the board members are probably familiar of the town's longstanding relationship with the Friends of Falmouth Dogs. Wonderful volunteer-driven organization that takes strays that come to the animal control facility and finds homes for them. They also take care of the animals in between. We are at a new phase now with the happy news that there are very few strays in the town of Falmouth. But there still are people who are interested in receiving rescue dogs. So this memorandum of understanding will allow for dogs from out of state to be received at the facility and adopted out. And Greg Fraser and I have gone through some details of those procedures to make sure we have good systems in place to get information about those animals to screen them for disease and behavioral issues so that we're not taking problem animals into our community. And this is a pilot program for one year to see how it goes with a limit on the number of dogs. Only four can be held at any one time at the facility.
Great, thank you for summarizing that. Any questions? Nancy, was that, no?
No, I was going to move to approve.
Okay. Did you have a question, Doug? Yep, go ahead.
Is this open-ended? There's no date on it? It's just a permanent agreement?
No, I think it's a one-year.
Okay, I didn't see any date on it.
The memorandum of understanding is not limited, but the agreement for dogs from out of state does have a limit. It can be terminated by either party at any time.
I saw that, Bruce.
Yeah.
So this is a permanent standing agreement unless somebody wants to back out?
That's correct. That's correct. But the out-of-state dogs is limited to one year. And actually, this arrangement has been in place for many, many years without any formal written agreement. So this.
So we're kind of doing two things at once. We're formalizing the relationship with this organization. And then we're also having the one-year pilot program. So the general MOU with them doesn't have an end date, can be terminated at any time. The pilot program for the dogs is a one-year. And then presumably come back to the board for an extension?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Any other questions for Peter? I have a motion from Nancy. Do I have a second?
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have vote to approve extension of existing parking agreement with the Steamship Authority. This is something that has come before us a bit. And Julian, did you want to add anything to it?
Certainly, just to note, both this and item E, the agreement with the Woods Hole Business Association, our companion pieces, these were negotiated essentially at the same time. This is to lease spaces to the Steamship Authority for their use in what we call the Church Street parking lot that the town owns. But also to allow an agreement extension. Both of them would be extensions of existing agreements to allow the Woods Hole Business Association to manage 40 to 45 parking spaces to the benefit of the merchants in the Woods Hole area. And it will help alleviate the parking issues there. Both of these have continued successfully for a number of years. And I'm suggesting the board's consideration, if you're willing, for a three-year extension on both, both of which would conclude December 31st, 2024. Actually, the Woods Hole Business Association portion has an earlier date. And I'm suggesting that they be done concurrently, conclude concurrently.
Any discussion or questions from the board? Go ahead, Doug, Brown, and then Sam.
Is there a sense that the number of spaces is adequate and it's working well?
You may wish to have Beth Colt, who's an attendee. And she's the, I believe she's the current president of Woods Hole Business. And we're happy to have Beth join us. She had contacted me via email. And we've been exchanging information on this. I think it's been working well. There's, but I'll let Beth comment if we want to bring Beth into the meeting, if that'd be the board's desire. I think there's always a possibility or desire to expand it a bit. But I think with Beth's assistance, it's worked reasonably well during this period we've had this relationship.
Okay, so maybe if we could bring IT, if we could bring Beth Colt over. I see her coming on.
Hi, how are you? Hi, how are you? Thank you for having me.
Yeah, so we were just trying to get a sense of if that number, the current number seems sort of appropriate or just, you know, are there other, any other factors that we should know about? And I know we've been in kind of a COVID world, so that's probably throwing things.
We have in the past asked for expansion. We did not feel that that was appropriate this year because we underused the spaces last year, really directly due to the pandemic. So we just feel that the status quo would serve us well. And we would love to keep the door open to ask you sometime down the road for more. But I think what we have now is adequate.
The plan that we have in front of us shows 45 spots. I guess I would love to have it go, I still like the range of up to 60, but I'd like to sort of move it up to 45 to 60, not allow it to go back down to 40.
Okay, any other thoughts on that? Go ahead, Doug Brown.
Well, so with the range, that's what I was going to ask next. So the range of spaces between 40 and 60, so we're using 40 now, is that right?
I believe we've had the right to use 40 to 45. And we've pushed close to the 45 every year except last year.
So contained within this agreement is the ability to go to 60 if we go back and ask the Steamship for more space? Is that correct, Mr. Susso?
I believe they'll accommodate us if we request, so request. I'm happy to do that.
But I think what Doug Jones is saying is he would like to see it say 45 to 60 to capture those five as a, you know, sort of a baseline rather than part of that flex. Is that what you're saying, Doug? Okay.
And I got a feeling that this is going to be a super busy summer. And I think we're going to probably find out halfway through the summer that we wish we asked for 60, but we'll have to see.
I'm okay with moving it up to 60.
Would we have to, of course, we'd have to go back to the Steamship Authority and ask for them to agree to that.
I don't know that.
I would do so. The agreement now says they'll make 40-year-round spaces available. But I think they'll, you know, we have a good relationship with them. And I think I'll be happy to engage them and ask if that could be increased to as many as 60.
I guess I'm a little surprised that we're doing a three-year, Mr. Susso. I thought our plan was to do it as a one-year and then renegotiate. And so if we are doing it for a three-year, I think that is the piece of negotiating tactic we can use, saying to get those extra two years, we want this up to 60.
Yep.
Or at least the ability.
They told me that they're happy to do a one-year or they'd consider a three-year. So it's not a do or die for them either way. And I'd be happy to make that request.
It is the only thing we actually have. It's the only carrot we have with the Steamship Authority. Everything else, they can say, we can do what we want. Ignore all the zoning laws in Falmouth. It is actually the only bargaining chip we have. And so I am, the amount of work we did to do this agreement with a limited timepiece, it's the only reason I'm a little reluctant to even go with a three-year. I was saying, thinking that we're moving forward with a one-year with the idea that this year we'd spend some time really figuring out what was going to go forward. The Steamship Authority keeps threatening to cut off access to the bike path as their sort of trump card that they hold.
So we could do a couple of things. I think the options for the board tonight would be to vote a one-year. And then you can come back and, you know, after this summer goes by, address it. We could have Mr. Susso go back and discuss the issue of the 60 spots and vote that at a later date, if we can work that into an agreement. So I think those are probably the two options that are before us. I'm happy to do whatever this board would prefer.
I guess to give yourself time, I would suggest a two-year extension with the 60 spaces. This is what my motion would be.
Aggrassant, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So we would really be directing you, Mr. Susso, with this vote to go back to negotiate that. So all those in favor, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And English-Braga, aye. So we will bring that, hopefully, a modified lease back to this board and get that done. Yes, Mr. Susso?
If it's agreeable to the board, if we have a agreement on that, I'll just be happy to sign it and advise the board that it's concluded with that, with the condition of two years and 60 spaces. And if we have, we have any difficulty with that, I'll be happy to come back to the board and so advise as well.
Does that work for the board?
It does.
Great, okay. Beth, thank you. Anything else we should know, Beth?
No, super appreciative. Thank you so much. It's really going to help.
Thank you. Sam, go ahead.
Good luck this summer.
Back up and make sure that we cover 2D. So I will move to authorize the Town Manager to execute an extension of the existing lease agreement with the Steamship Authority for parking Woods Hole through December 31st, 2024.
Okay. In accordance with what?
One, two years on that.
Two years?
23.
Okay, then to December 31st, 2023.
Okay. I think I had a second from Nancy. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, Brown?
Aye. Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
English-Braga, aye. Great, thank you. Thank you, Julian. You'll let us know if there are any issues with that.
Yes, did you want to have a similar vote on E, which is the Woods Hole Business Association specifically?
But I thought we did that.
Right, I think that that's, my understanding was our, that first vote we took was to vote.
Yeah, we just reversed them.
I think we just reversed them. So the first vote was for you to negotiate that 60, that the higher number for the two-year period.
Right, I, and I think the business association, we just heard from Beth Colt said she's fine with that. So the negotiation will be actually with.
Just with the Steamship Authority, yes.
Okay, very good.
Yep. Thank you, thank you for clarifying. Yep. Um, okay, next we have, um, okay, so that's D and E. All right, vote to approve the proposed Department of Public Works Water Conservation Measures. And see.
Madam Chair, we have Kahal O'Brien and, uh, your McConerty should, uh, join us for that discussion.
Okay.
Unless the board wants to act prior to that. You asked if this come back up tonight.
Yep.
It'll be considered for your action. And in your, uh, board packet is a description, uh, from, uh, a memo from Kahal mentioning what is being proposed, uh, once again.
Yeah, so let me just read that, and then we can decide, just so the public can hear it if they haven't looked at our, um, packet. So the proposal is this.
Madam Chair, could I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Just because we do have a public hearing. I know we don't have to hold it at the right time, but we have quite a few items before, in between now and when the public hearing is supposed to be on our agenda. Would it make sense to move to that now?
Um, I would say let's just do this one item, and then we'll move to the public hearing, only because we have, I see that Kahal is, has joined us, and I think this, my guess is this, so we've talked about this a couple times, so maybe this will be fairly, uh, quick, and then we'll move right over. I, I agree, we need to, uh, we have a lot in between, so let me just.
One question on the previous, if I could, I'm sorry, but, uh, for the, um, Town of Falmouth's Request for Proposals for Church Street Parking Village Permit Program, did we cover that already within the other discussion?
Yes.
That was included.
That, that's what the six, so, so in one, it's the town negotiating with the Steamship Authority, and the other is the town negotiating with the village, uh, the business association. And so that's why Beth was, she noted that sixty spots would certainly be welcomed, um, and so we're adjusting both of those.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions about that?
Nope, thank you.
So let me just, and I'm sorry, Doug Jones, you were saying something. I couldn't hear you. Okay, okay. Um, so let me just read the watering of, so this would be starting the twenty-second of May. Watering of lawns is limited to odd-even days based on house address between the hours of eight PM and eight AM. Odd houses on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, even houses on Wednesday, Friday, Sunday. This would allow for automatic sprinkler systems to be set by the days of the week, which is how their automated system controls are programmed in the field. Washing of sidewalks, patios, and driveways is prohibited, excluding business for, uh, safety and health reasons. Pistol grip nozzles auto-shut off are required for all hoses and used for washing cars and all hoses at dockside facilities. Uh, we heard that this was based on the fact that we have a very low level of, um, water. We have had diminished, significantly diminished precipitation, both snow and rain, um, and that, um, we also have the water tank going, um, that's gonna be painted, which will impact, um, that as well. Um, and we are, I think the goal here is to try and get ahead of the curve compared to where we were last year, which we had to put those, um, restrictions on pretty quickly without any notice. Um, and so I, I know we have Peter and Kahal here. Anything else, gentlemen? Um, you covered it pretty well when you were before us. Anything else that we should know before we take the vote? Uh, go ahead, Julian, and then Kahal, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Just wanted to confirm, um, we were able to complete the water tank painting in the past, uh, uh, season, thankfully. So to the best of my knowledge, um, that project is behind us, but Kahal can confirm that if he would.
I think we're referring to the, the mass military.
Sorry, yeah, the, yeah, it's the MMR tank.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Kahal?
Uh, thank you very much. I just wanted to add, we mailed out to all the local irrigation installation companies, and they gave us additional feedback. So we're even, we're considering removing the hours to really simplify enforcement. And the other thing that we got is feedback that is, makes sense to how we operate is the daily watering of newly installed lawns and other plantings would be exempt. The thought process is, is that when they newly install plantings, they only water them lightly, but they need to do it three times a day. So they do an eight, a noon, and like a four. They're brief, but they use the systems in place. It sounded reasonable to us at Public Works, so we decided to add that to the, the proposal. Uh, it would allow for better enforcement of the actual irrigated systems that are automatic, but still allow for the new construction that's ongoing as we speak.
Great idea.
Great. Any questions for Peter or Kahal, uh, Doug Jones, and then Sam Patterson?
I remember last year, the five AM time period was a significant problem. Is there anything we should put in the restriction to try to solve that issue, or do you still think the odd-even houses will take care of that?
What we're hoping is that the odd-even eliminates fifty percent of the demand, even if it's conservative, we only get to twenty or thirty, depending. That would, it drops us down a couple million gallons, and, uh, select for member, that's exactly right, is that we can't handle that massive hit. So we're hoping that if they really abide by the, the regulation, that we should see that couple million gallon drop in that short period of time. And we're, based on the numbers we ran, that should address a lot of the issues west, north, Falmouth, Telegraph Hill, some of the northern, east Falmouth. It's that, it was an extra couple million gallons, and we jump up seven, eight million and go up to a peak of about ten around July. That's when the pressure inflow just dropped like a rock, and we're hoping fifty-fifty would eliminate that to the best we can.
Is the, uh, did the irrigation company say the five o'clock was a key time for them? Is that the best time to be watering grass? And if we.
What they actually said, I'm sorry, what they actually said, and it was all seven or eight of them, is that they actually prefer the odd-even. Because it actually makes for a healthier, it makes it easier on the client, and the client's a little happier because they're using a little less money. But it, the performance is the same. So they said five AM was important, but they also said every other day was more than adequate. So what the customer, what the residents would get now, the irrigation companies thought was much better, and they, all of them were very supportive because they, like us, are concerned if it turns into a drought, all bets are off, so they're hoping that this will really stretch us out and, um, they, none, not one of them had an issue with complying because the odd-even seemed to, they can still keep their clients happy.
I was just wondering, if we could request that they avoid the five to six times, saying if you can do six to seven, if some people can do three to four, not make that part of the requirement, but the more varied that can be as opposed to everyone running five to six.
You're absolutely right, and we, we will spread that message as people call and communicate with us.
Great, thank you.
Sam, and then Doug Brown.
Yeah, Kahal, I, I've lost track of exactly what the timing should be on each day that they're permitted to water. So it's, you're changing it away from the eight PM to eight AM.
What we did was he eliminated the time completely because we want to make it exactly, uh, enforceable. There was some confusion last year and this year when we put the hours out, and we ran the numbers. What our ultimate goal is, is to keep half of the systems completely off for twenty-four hours. So, uh, uh, it seems like it will get better compliance. That's our goal. If we eliminated the hours completely, because what we actually found is it wasn't just five AM, it was actually five to eleven AM. Because even with a little bit of variety, we just cannot handle the total volume. So they, we ended up coming up with, this is all or nothing. If it's your day, you can water. If it's not your day, we ask that you don't. That makes it simpler for enforcement, too. If we get complaints and issues, we'll just, it's as simple as today's not your day. And rather than get into different things, because we didn't want to have to chase it, some of the customers were concerned. They wanted the enforceability. And we want to be fair and consistent, so we wanted to make it so simple that it was, you know your house number, you know the day of the week, that's as simple as it is. That way, we can try to push for the best amount of enforcement and compliance, so it's fair to the people who are doing it right away.
Thank you.
So, so I think that the, so what I read was from April one, so I think you guys have changed it since then, so, um, it'll strictly be, because that still had the timing in it, so it'll strictly be the odd-even. Okay, thanks for clarifying. Okay, Doug Brown?
Just point of, uh, personal information, that my, uh, irrigation contractor said that, uh, they're going to three AM now because they heard about this water shortage at five AM, so that's what they set mine for.
Great. Great. Any further questions from the board? Do I have, oh, Julian, go ahead.
Pardon me, Madam Chair, are we making this effective May twenty-second now?
Uh, Kahal and Peter, is that your recommendation still? Or did you want it effective immediately? Peter, you're muted.
I think he's gagged.
Yep, somebody, somebody did something to his machine.
In the hat.
Can I ask another question while we're reading? What about the irrigation systems that run during the rainstorms?
They should have a rain sensor installed in them, and that's something that we strongly recommend when we get people to call and ask about them. Because not only is it, it make a mess for us as far as consumption, it's also a big waste of money for the client. So most systems do come with those, but as part of our education this season, we're gonna remind everybody, they should not just have a rain sensor, but it should be activated and should be functional to save the money and save our water.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, sorry about that. My mute just was not working. Uh, yeah, it was May twenty, May twenty-second is the date we're looking at. But, uh, just to, like to remind the public that, um, we've tried this in years past, and, uh, it's real, with the water shortage and the drought that we've been having, um, we're not, it would have not been getting a lot of rain for recharge. Uh, we're really asking the public to, um, to, uh, help out and, 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 um, abide by these, uh, regulations and the odd evens, because, uh, if we do not get any further stormwater and, and, uh, and recharge, then Kahal and I will be back to the board uh, in the following months, and we really don't want to do that. We're trying to work with the residents, and we're trying to work with the public and the landscapers and the contractors to keep this going. So, um, I, I think it's, everyone has to, uh, pull on the same side of the rope, and we need to, uh, be all going in the same direction on this.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Sam, and then Kahal, uh, Doug, sorry, and then Kahal.
I was just gonna say, uh, if you, you'll know it if they're not complying, so you'll come back to us within a month or so if it's not working, I imagine.
But, but we have people that, we have, uh, uh, media readers that are out, and we have other folks that are out. We'll know it, we'll know it on the street, and we'll know it by the numbers.
Right.
Yep, great, thank you. Kahal?
Thank you. If you wanted to start it sooner, because of the discussion you all had when you were talking about it last meeting, we went back as a team and looked at it. If you wanted to make it even effective, May first, in talking to the landscape firms, they're already going out and steadying the systems up early because there's so many, and it's such a high demand. So we wouldn't have an objection if you wanted it for May first. It gives them a week. We're gonna start putting it up on the website tomorrow if the Select Board would like to do it. Uh, depending on how you direct us, we're gonna start the education stuff immediately. Uh, and if you wanted to do it for May first or something of that nature, that'd be fine, because we want to make sure the companies are, some of them actually said they already started setting them up in, uh, April. So they, they were glad that we reached out. They were glad that the Select Board had, had been so proactive, and they were already setting appointments early. Some of the larger firms have been out for a couple weeks.
Well, let's just be real, um, you guys were proactive. You brought it to us, so, uh, we're gonna give credit where credit's due. The, the two of you were proactive in bringing this and, and really reaching out to, um, folks who work in the field, which I think is key, um, because they can amplify that message out to their customers. So, um, what is the pleasure of this board? We have the, the May first as a possible start date.
Um, yeah.
Okay.
The sooner we get started, the, you know, the more conditioning we actually could create.
Okay, so are you moving, um, this recommended conservation program to start on May first?
I am, and would you, shall we read it again so it's clear to the people that might be listening?
If you just wanna, yep.
I moved it, we have the following water restrictions. Watering of lawns is limited to odd-even days based on house address on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and even houses, oh, so odd houses on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and even houses on Wednesday, Friday, Sunday. This would allow for automatic sprinklers to be set by the days of the week, which is how their automated systems controls are programmed in the field. Washing of sidewalks, patios, and driveways is prohibited, excluding business for safety and health reasons. And last, pistol grip nozzles, that's auto-shut off, are required for all hoses used for washing cars and all hoses at dockside facilities.
We also want to add the bullet about the newly installed lawns, though, right?
Yes.
Yep, so with the exception of newly installed lawns.
And plantings.
And, or plantings, yes.
Okay. Any, uh, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
An effective May first.
Yeah, I said.
I have a second from Mr. Brown. Any further discussions? Further discussion, excuse me.
For, uh, accepting the feedback and implementing some changes in accordance with that. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, um, a public hearing. I'm going to read the notice. Notice is hereby given under Chapter one thirty-eight of the General Laws as amended. That Chapacote Grill Inc. has applied for an alteration of premises of its all-alcoholic common victoria license located at four-ten West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, Mass. A hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, on Monday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, at seven-thirty PM on the above application. This, um, is per order of the Select Board, and it was published April sixteenth in the Falmouth Enterprise. Um, and I see Attorney Clower coming on. Good evening. So we did receive some information later, uh, late this afternoon from Assistant Town Council, um, uh, and she did provide us information. I'm just trying to pull it up. Uh, Mr. Suso, can you just speak to that? I can't pull up her exact email in front of me.
Certainly, um, yeah, Ivory Mullen advised us that, um, the existing situation was approved by, uh, through the, uh, auspices of this board under the temporary, uh, outdoor dining, uh, regulations under the governor's emergency orders. And the concern is that, uh, now that, and, and that continues through November of this year, as approved again under the board's auspices. Uh, but that's under the temporary circumstances for outdoor dining. Uh, the current request is for, uh, a permanent situation, and, uh, that is outside of the governor's temporary orders. And according to Assistant Town Council, um, that may trigger either a planning board review or a zoning board of appeals review necessarily under the zoning code, which was temporarily lifted under the governor's emergency orders, but that would not be permanent. So, uh, that is, uh, a concern that was raised that may need to be addressed in advance of the board being able to act upon this.
So we didn't get that information from Assistant Town Council, um, until later this afternoon. So, um, just wanted to kind of bring that to your attention, Attorney Clower, and just ask if, um, you know, I think the board, uh, and I don't, I, my understanding is that, um, the board may not have all of the information in front of it to sort of act with the appropriate authority at this point in time, and we didn't want to necessarily, um, you know, prejudice the request in any way, so just, you know.
I think we need to postpone this, continue it until we've found out whether the zoning board and planning board want to, uh, look at the plan, because it would be inappropriate for us to approve it if it needs to go to them first. So I would move to continue the hearing until we found, get that, those questions answered.
I just wanted to let Attorney Clower, just go, go ahead. I know we threw a lot at you at once. Go ahead.
Sure, so that's, uh, that's obviously the first, uh, I've heard of that. Um, however, in preparing for this, um, I did take a look at the property. I don't believe that this would require approval by either the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. It is, um, it is not subject to an existing special permit. Um, we're, we're not adding, uh, we, we wouldn't be triggering site plan review, uh, any of the requirements for that. Um, I believe that, uh, they can do this as, as a matter of right. However, um, you know, of course, I would defer to the town and, and their review of that, and if need be, we would address that accordingly. Um, I do think that this board could proceed tonight. The issue, um, if I can, is that, uh, you know, this was approved under the COVID auspices, and it, uh, it has proven to be quite successful. Um, the applicant likes it, the customers like it. Um, it, it's added a nice, um, it's become, it's becoming a, a feature, not a bug, so to speak, and the, the applicant, um, would like to make some financial investments in the seating for even this summer, um, but before doing so, wants to know that they're able to continue this, um, on a permanent basis. Uh, I think that this board approving this would not uh, change any requirements that we might have from, whether it be from planning or from zoning. I think that could, of course, be addressed, if, if need be, but I don't believe that there are. Um, that said, I would, of course, to certainly respect what, what this board determines tonight, but I'm not sure what additional information, uh, we can give you, uh, beyond what we have already.
Thank you. Uh, Doug Jones, and then Doug Brown?
Uh, did the current plan that's being used to take up handicap parking spaces?
Uh, no, I do not believe so, sir. Uh, the handicap parking spaces have not been altered by this.
And is there still a lawsuit?
What's that?
Is there still an outstanding lawsuit by the neighbor?
Um, I, I actually spoke with. Um, I, I actually spoke with the attorney who is uh, handling that for Mr. Reed, and I believe that they're in the process of working through a settlement process on that right now, but it is uh, it is still uh, out there, but nothing is going on with it.
Doug Brown, did you have a question?
I do, uh, well, one is that um, a question is Mr. Clower, uh, Attorney Clower, excuse me. Um, would this also not uh, trigger the planning board's new um, thousand square foot change of use um, regulation?
I don't believe it would. Um, I, I don't think we're altering more than a thousand square feet for, for the purposes of the, of this restaurant. And nor are we adding uh, the requirement for additional parking spaces, uh, cuz we're not adding new seats. He simply wants to repurpose some of the existing permitted seats uh, to be allowed on the outside as well.
Okay, and then just one other comment if I could. If this does come back to us exclusively, I just would have a comment that um, I have a concern about the site that I wanted to just share with you, which is uh, something that was raised by a, a citizen, I guess probably an elderly citizen who has trouble walking. And that was the, the fact that the planters on the other side of the parking lot don't correlate with the uh, parking bumpers that are there. So when you're walking between the planters, you have to step over those concrete parking bumpers. So there is a bit of a trip hazard there, so I just wanna bring that to your attention cuz that is a concern that I have that if it comes back to us, I would probably have to ask that again.
Okay.
It's just a heads up.
Um, Julian and then Sam?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. One other item that I wanted to note, um, that was raised by uh, Associate Town Council. Uh, she did ask a question, uh, to the best of her knowledge, that lawsuit might not have yet been dismissed. Um, and it did involve a uh, a disagreeable uh, butter to, to the situation. Um, she also suggested that it would be prudent to acquire a clear documentation of Chappaquay Grill's exclusive, and she underlined exclusive, right to use the proposed seating area from the landlord, G M Leoni Corporation. A one-page letter regarding use of the area was circulated last May during the Order Thirty-five permitting, which was the governor's temporary order. But I re-advises uh, the select board to require an updated document with a more recent date and express language regarding permanent exclusive right to use the area outside of the context of the governor's emergency COVID orders.
Okay.
As well, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sam?
Actually, that was the issue that I wanted to raise. So uh, thanks for making it official and the town council was a recommendation. Cuz that's my concern, is that we really need to get those other vendors or, you know, commercial e- entities involved here in a kind of an open hearing process. It's one thing in the middle of a pandemic to make these kinds of exceptions is sort of a temporary thing. But to solidify this on an ongoing basis, I think requires a, a broader hearing.
Nancy?
And I think um, in addition to that concern, um, the concern that it, it is in the middle of litigation, would it be prudent for us to make any decisions at this point?
Okay. So we had a motion, so sort of with all of that as the background, um, we had a motion from uh, Doug Jones to continue the hearing so that we can just, again, we got this kind of late, and I know we're, we're putting um, you know, having some additional questions, sending them your way, Attorney Clower. So um, Doug has a motion to continue the hearing so that we can get some further clarity on some of those particular issues. Um.
I would second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion. Oh, go, go ahead, Kevin.
So I just, I just wanna clarify what it is that we're looking for. Now, I certainly understand uh, Mr. Suso's uh, point from, from Attorney Mullen. Uh, something regarding the permanent right to, to use that area. Uh, that, that's clear as day. Uh, I'm not quite sure what other deliverables the board is looking for, and I just wanna be clear before we, we close this up. And I just wanted to um, also go back to, to Mr. Patterson's comment about this requiring a broader hearing, and that's exactly what we're doing. That's, that's what we're, why, why we're here. Um, not under the um, the COVID relief, but certainly looking as, uh, looking to do a public hearing in order to make this a permanent uh, fixture.
Okay, so, so what I think the board is asking for is um, that, you know, clarification from the landlord that there isn't an issue with that exclusive use by um, the applicant. And then um, maybe perhaps some update on where litigation stands. Um, if there, if there's an ability to give any further update, um.
And parking's not something we deal with, that's what the planning board deals with. And so that's the reason I want to have this referred to the planning board first and have them make their decision, or the zoning board, and because that's, those are their issues. We don't deal with those issues.
And it may be that, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, is this board going to refer to the planning board first, or should, or are you looking to have me submit something to the planning board?
I, I think we need, this is my position. I think that we will do some legwork through the town manager's office to ascertain whether this is something that planning believes they need to weigh in on, and the same with zoning. So we will get that clarification for you. Uh, we're not gonna have you submit another application if it's not appropriate. I think we just need, this board, you know, we've been operating in this COVID world for a little while, and now we're kind of switching gears. Uh, and I think we just wanna be clear that planning and zoning doesn't feel that um, this falls within their purview. So we will clarify that. Yes, Julian?
Uh, I also wanted to confirm once again, Madam Chair, just for the record, that there is a permit in place allowing this through November.
Yes.
So there is not a time sensitive uh, issue here necessarily.
Right, I, I think what Attorney Clower is saying is his client would like to make some further investment. And so in that, in that sense, for this upcoming season, so it may be, you know, slightly time sensitive within the next few weeks. But I think we can get, you know, certainly within the next, you know, thirty days, we can get some clarity and, and move forward. So we'll get the clarity about zoning and planning and then convey that to you.
That'd be, that'd be fantastic.
Okay, anything else from the board? So I have Doug's motion to continue and Nancy's second.
Doug, do you have a further comment? Looking for commitment to sticking to the seating plan as opposed to this being a put in the door for getting more seats outside and then going back to the increasingly uh, total seating plan. And so I, I guess in the plan, I would want a commitment that there is no intent to increase the number of seats.
No, that's, that's been stated, and that was stated to the uh, select board office and, and also as part of the application, that they intend to remain at a hundred and two seats.
Right.
Great, okay. Any further questions before we vote for the continuance? So the, the motion here is to continue this hearing to?
Is there a date, Ms. Braga?
Uh, go ahead, Doug Brown. Yes, I'm gonna look up a date for you just a second.
Yeah, well, I just wanna say if it comes back to us, I'd like to um, maybe envision the whole parking lot rather than just the part that you're using for seating. Because the creation of the seating does impact the remaining part of the parking lot, which is not really used for anything. Because there's not enough room now for the cars to get in. So I think that the configuration of those block, uh, those planters and those parking ballards should be included in the, the plan that we review if we are the ones reviewing it, or whoever's reviewing it.
Okay. So I would suggest May twenty-seventh because May tenth is um, I, I think a little bit tight just to give room to make sure um, we get feedback.
Twenty-fourth, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, twenty-fourth, excuse me, May twenty-fourth?
Yep.
Okay, so the motion is to continue this hearing until May twenty-fourth. Mr. Suso, um, you will, your office will be in touch with Mr. Clower just to confirm about planning and zoning. Will you coordinate that? Okay. Okay, um, that's the motion. Um, I have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones? He said aye. English Braga, aye. Um, so thank you, and definitely reach out if there are any further questions about what we're looking for.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much for your time. We appreciate it.
I hope you don't think we're being discouraging, cuz I like the idea of this outdoor seating.
I think perfectly valid questions, uh, obviously hard to respond the day of. Uh, but uh, I, I, I wanna note that I think this is really important, not only because it's the closest restaurant to my house and I wanna make sure they intend to produce fantastic food. So thank you guys, we do appreciate your time.
No problem, thank you. Great, okay, next, returning to summary of actions. We have um, let's see, G, to consider letter to Barnstable County regarding septic finance. Uh, Mr. Suso, do you just want to, um, we, we have this in our packet, but uh, are there any questions from the board or anything additional, Mr. Suso, that we need to know?
Well, Madam Chair, this uh, this came uh, is a recommendation from Water Quality Management Committee Chair Eric Turkington. Also, it's uh, consistent with uh, communication which has come from the Association for Preservation of Cape Cod. And I took the liberty of uh, uh, following up on the suggestion and just drafting a letter uh, to the extent that the board might be comfortable and interested in pursuing it in this or any other format. So happy to proceed in uh, uh, whatever your pleasure would be.
Great, any questions from anyone on the board?
The only, only thing I would suggest is that we, we put Megan down as a, a co-signer. I know you say this action from the board, but you know, from one political body to another, I think they look at the bottom and see that it's, you know, the chair of the select board does add a little weight.
Okay. Any, anything else? Okay, with that, um, do I have, I guess we don't really need to vote it. Um, we can, we've considered it and we consider it well-written, so thank you, Julian, if you wanna send that off, that would be great.
Very good.
The letter does say we voted unanimously, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would move approval.
Thank you.
Patterson, second.
Patterson, second, okay. All those in favor, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Now, if I vote against it, you'll have to rewrite the letter.
I know, no, you really throw a wrench in the works.
Aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you. All right, next we have approved grant of license to Lawrence T. and Valerie N. Sullivan to place, erect, and maintain a retaining wall for three forty-five Grand Avenue. Um, so we have in our packets.
Want me to comment, Madam Chair?
Sure, please go right ahead. I am just pulling the grant of license up. Go ahead.
An existing wall and the license was uh, created by town council uh, to remedy the situation where the wall had been encroaching, and it's just recognizing that it is there and granting a license at the pleasure of the board, which could be revocable at any time.
Great, any, any questions, Sam?
I do have a question. How high is this wall? I, I, I come up to intersections where there are lots of hedges that run right out. Makes it very difficult for a driver to see whether there's crossing traffic or not. Uh, I would hate to approve something that's been an obstruction for motorists for some time. If I didn't find it on the, the drawing.
It's pretty low. My knowledge, this is not an intersection, but um, perhaps Jim McLaughlin or Peter McConerty might be familiar.
I think we also have Attorney Clower here. Uh, Kevin, if you wanna tell us, do you know that how high this wall is?
I do, I, I was, I was lingering, I don't, I didn't mean to uh, to appear to be easy helping, certainly. Um, no, I, I represent the applicants, uh, Larry and Valerie Sullivan. Um, I can actually, i- if you're okay with it, uh, share my screen. Um, to have just the Google uh, Street View up, um, so bear with me for one second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, Doug Brown said it was low, that's fine with me.
It's very low.
There you go.
Oh, yeah.
It's at most about two feet. It, this is uh.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Perfect, okay. Thank you, that's a good visual. Um, do I have a motion from the board?
Move approval.
Okay.
I'd second that.
Okay, motion a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you, Kevin.
Thank, thank you all very much.
Um, okay, next we have authorized letter to our U S senators and representatives requesting that federal infrastructure funds um, to support clean water projects be allocated to Cape Cod. Um, so we have that draft letter here in the packet.
Once again, once again, I'd like Megan to sign on our behalf, uh, so we could have two signatures on there because we are the political body and we're talking to our political representatives.
Okay. Any other um, comments on the draft?
No, I, I, I move that we approve this letter and send it out on our behalf.
I second.
I have a motion a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you, Julian.
Thank you.
We have approved grant of license to USGS to install a monitoring well in the field behind the ballpark in Woods Hole for scientific research study of carbon cycling in coastal wetlands. We had quite a bit of um,
Information.
Infor- information on this, and um, does anyone have any questions um, at all about this?
Just wanted to comment on the great video of the helicopter last week.
Yeah, amazing. Uh, go ahead, Doug.
Different project, though.
Yeah.
Completely.
But so um, on the agenda item, it says approval of the uh, well at the Ball Field, doesn't mention the West Falmouth site. Is that okay?
Yes, the West Falmouth site is being uh, allowed by the um, uh, the congregation um, across from the library.
Okay, ju- that's not our property, just part of the project.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
No move?
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Seeing any, uh, seeing no further discussion by roll call, please. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you. Uh, next, approve application for MVP grant funding for Falmouth Coastal Sewer Infrastructure Vulnerability Improvements.
Move that we approve that application?
Taylor, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thanks to Amy Lowell for paying attention to that. Um, okay, next we have um, under special events. So these are requests for waiver or reductions of special permit fees. Uh, these are events that we previously approved. So first is approve request for a reduction of the special event permit fee for Sunday worship services, John Wesley United Methodist Church at Surf Drive Beach. Um, so.
Patterson, second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Uh, approve request for reduction of the special permit event, excuse me, for special event permit fee for Falmouth Farmers Market Marina Park.
Move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye, thank you. Next, approve request for waiver slash reduction of the special event permit fee for Boy Scout troop thirty-eight Marina Park.
Tail, uh, Taylor, uh, so moved.
Okay.
Patterson's second, but I, I'd like to see the fee waived entirely. The Scouts do a lot of projects in the conservation areas. They do pet trash pickup. This is one organization that doesn't collect any, you know, any fees, doesn't have any source of income other than that, what the dues are that the troop collects. So I, I think this is an exception. I think it's kinda like our, our school department. Uh, and so I, I'd like to see us do whatever we can to, to minimize this fee entirely.
I know, we, we've all said, I don't think we are allowed to under our, the way at least our policy is written.
I'm gonna just go back, the policy is here, and let me just say, it says um, we can um, okay, so the town will waive daily fees for special events. Um.
Under the recurring events, the paragraph above that, Megan.
Yeah, so any recurring event, right?
Yep.
Maybe granted a discount up to seventy-five percent of the daily charge. Um.
But the paragraph above it says recurring one-day events, more often than four times a year, will be charged the full fee for at least the first and last day of the scheduled event.
But is this an event that happens more, the, the troop one, remind me how often that they're, they're meeting there, correct?
They are meeting more than once. I think it's for a period of up to seven weeks.
Okay. So it seems like with our um, policy, the most that we can do is that, you know, it's not a total waiver, but we can certainly agree to give them the maximum that we can waive. Is that what you, is that what you're suggesting, Sam?
Yes.
And I guess what I'm suggesting is maybe follow the same thing from, uh, maybe get more to what Sam's saying. That if there's an in-kind service that we can ask them to provide, which I'm sure they'd be happy to do, and it could be something the Boy Scouts would do anyway, just like the farmers market is doing, saying. just like the farmer's market is doing, saying, hey, what about we do that? We follow our precedent we set and ask them to do something to do half the cost of that.
The service project.
Right.
Maybe a little cleanup at Churvis Pond or something.
Or even at the marina. I mean.
Yeah. There's always things to clean up at the marina. That's the unfortunate reality, especially in the middle of summer. So. So would we, is that a, an amended motion from you, Sam, that we work with them to create an in-kind?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Project. Okay. And Mr. Suso, would your office can arrange that with them?
Yeah. Were we talking about an in-kind project in lieu of any fee?
I guess I'm going still with it, that maybe the $50 permit fee. I think there's a, also a $10 license or the application fee and maybe $50 that would be in kind for some service project.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Does that make sense, Mr. Suso?
Yep. We can find a way to make it happen.
Great. Seeing no further discussion. By roll call. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thanks, Sam. It's very true. We get a lot of value from particularly those Eagle Scout projects that really have long-term improvements for our entire community. Really, we're so, so lucky here that we have so many Eagle Scout.
We get a lot of service out of Sam. He's still a Boy Scout.
That's right. Still has that, that moral compass there continuing. So.
Yes, he does.
All right. Last one, we have approved request for a waiver or reduction of the special event permit fee for the Falmouth Art Market at Marina Park.
And I guess I'd like to do the same kind of thing for them is I think we really need to actually stick with our policy. The $100 reduced fee is something that we've held on to. And I don't think should, but if we want to, if they can come up with a in-kind to reduce the amount they're actually paying, I would encourage that too, that we stick with what our policy is, the first and last day of $400.
Yep. I think they do charge entry fees. So they have a source of income from the event and I think that's a little bit different.
Do they charge for people to come in?
No, they can't.
Oh, okay.
No, I think it's, it's similar to the farmer's market where there are just items, you know, for sale. So I think that's similar.
Okay.
I think Sam was referring to the fact that the exhibitors may have to pay a fee to be part of this.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
So they have a source of income to offset the fees.
And the other thing is that we've always, I thought if we did waivers, we asked for the financials, which we got from the farmer's market to actually verify what their income and expenses is. And I think that's also part of our policy is that we need to see.
Yeah, we need to see that. Okay. What's this board's pleasure with this particular request?
I, I have no problem minimizing the fee, but I, I don't know about, you know, doing an in-kind arrangement. I wouldn't go below what we've said is, they're, they're certainly public service. They serve the citizens as well as the particular vendors.
I guess I would recommend we go to our policy of the 200 first, 200 last, and the $100 fee for $500 instead of 300.
Patterson second.
And filing fee of 10. So I guess it's 310 total.
Patterson second.
Okay. I just don't want to go too fast because Mr. Suso has to follow up on it. Does that?
About $300 plus the filing fee, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And Diane had laid that out in your board packet as well for these.
I'm sorry. Let me go back. No, I think they were asking for 300. I guess I'm suggesting it's actually 510, which is a reduction from what the fee should be of over $1,800.
Yeah. Well, I, I'd also like to make sure that we're considering that this is a service that they're providing, pretty much as volunteers.
Yeah.
I guess, oh, go ahead.
With the reduced fee that you had last year, and that's, Diane was including both of these with the art market as well as the farmer's market because your fees have gone up. However, I know with farmer's markets, you just voted the fees that you adopted last year. So if you want to be, do that with art market as well, it would be 300 rather than five.
I guess I would, I, I understand what Doug is saying and I think for the future, we need to be consistent with asking people for that financials. I would just say after sort of the, the pandemic that we've just come through, I definitely would like to see us, you know, support getting some of these activities that do bring, you know, a lot of cultural enrichment to the community. I mean, you know, you can go to this market. You don't have to buy a single thing. You can walk through and see beautiful art by folks who are, you know, somewhat local. So I, I guess for this year, I'd like to see it. My opinion would just be I'd like to see it consistent, but I do think.
I amend my motion to $300, as I said, plus the $10 filing fee.
Okay. I do think though, Mr. Suso, we need to be clear that our policy requires that financial information as it comes forward.
I amend my second too.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. By roll call. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have new recommended. This is a retroactive, retroactive approval application for World Tai Chi Day Tai Chi Performance Cape Cod, Guangping Tai Chi, Ji Kwan Club, Marina Park, Saturday, April 24th, 2021, 9:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. Mr. Suso, do you just want to remind the board why this is coming to us, just for the public's edification relate?
Unfortunately, they came to us too late to, to get it to an earlier board meeting. So we're having to do it retroactive. It was this past Saturday and it was at, at the benchell at Marine Park, as noted. And the, let's see, I believe, you can see the fees laid out in the application. And it's included with the board packet.
Okay.
$25 filing fee, $10.
Any, go ahead, Doug Jones?
Was there a similar event at the library also?
I didn't see.
Anything coming to us for that purpose?
I drove by the library and there were a bunch of people at the exact same time doing Tai Chi on Saturday morning.
Well, it was World Tai Chi Day, so it may have been in multiple locations.
That may have been approved by the library trustees because it was certainly on their jurisdiction.
Yep.
On Tanyus.
Do I have a motion to approve this retroactively?
So move Patterson.
Okay. I have a second from Brown. Okay. All those in favor? Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Jones?
I'll go a little aye because there's not much choice, but the organizations have time to do this. You know, this has been scheduled for a long time as a World Tai Chi Day, but then to come to us and submit on April 15th. Uh, there's nothing we can do except for try to get these organizations to understand this is not acceptable.
I think a lot of them just don't know the rules.
Julian, go ahead.
To inject this little background on this one, my understanding is that this group has traditionally met in the Gus County Community Center and it's just wasn't available to them on this date. And, and also you get, you have that social distancing issue. So they wanted to do an outside venue and came to us at the benchell at Marina Park.
Okay.
And I guess on the other side, at least they asked. They could have just done without asking too.
Or paying any fees.
Right.
So, but, but point well taken. Just a reminder to folks, you know, these things do have, so if you want your events to be smooth and not, not have, you know, any potential that it could, part of why you come before the board is to make sure it doesn't overlap with another event that might be taking place, particularly as we get into the season of warmer weather. So if you have events, you know, really, please start early to plan for them. And I'll make my vote, English Braga, aye. Okay. Next, we have under business, discussion update on COVID-19 issues. So we have our health agent, Scott McGann.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Scott. We can hear you.
You hear me? Okay. Okay. I'm going to take screen. Get started on this. Everybody see my screen? Okay?
We can.
Yeah. Pretty cool. Everybody's eligible as of last week, huh? So we're, everybody's eligible over the age of 16, FBI. So what's the landscape of vaccines? So let's start with that. So this map indicates all the vaccination sites on the Cape. All the blues indicate pharmacies. You would register directly with them like always. Circled in red is the fairgrounds. I'll talk about that in a second. Circled in purple is 4Cs. That's where Barnstable's main hub, Barnstable County Health. These were generally their four sites. They're going to focus primarily on the 4Cs. The Melody Tent's going to be the primary focus of Cape Cod Healthcare, indicated in maroon. Arda Cape Health is going to be the gold out in Orleans and the Community Health Center of Cape Cod and Mashpee is sort of going to take over the fairgrounds. And the reason being is community health centers are seeing a big, big increase in doses. So they're getting state and federal doses. So why not partner with them, go with the hot hand and give them a site in which they could vaccinate on. So the fairgrounds will look the same. Inside the barn will be a different group of vaccinators and the vaccines went to a different entity. The outside will still be managed with the Barnstable County and, you know, the cert teams, our local cert team and also the mid-Cape cert team, emergency response teams, who know what to do inside, outside the barn. So it'll look the same to everybody. It's just that because the large increase in doses to both community centers, we might as well use them as mass vax. Now, those entities aren't generally into mass vaccination, so they've got to sort of use that new buzzword of pivot and pivot themselves into being mass vaccinators. And that's kind of what we've been working on the last couple of weeks. That's the consortium, the Cape Cod Vaccine Consortium. So what does that mean for you as someone looking to get a vaccine? So here's our website. Thanks, Peter Johnson Stubb. He does a great job with the website. And so here's what it looks like. So the big arrow shows here. So when you click here, that's going to take you, and I'll show you in a minute what that's going to look like. But let's focus in on the one over here, the pre-register for a vaccine appointment. That's going to take you to the state's website. So what's just happened is Barnstable County clinics, those run by the county, are now part of the same, what they call Color is the name of the software. Instead of Prep Mod, you remember using the term Prep Mod when we had the Willy Wonka Chocolate Factory Self-Registration Program of a month ago? You will pre-register yourself. So Barnstable County is not going to be like putting on Friday, register by noon for next week's doses. You're going to be pre-registered. So when you sign up for the pre-registration at the state, it would be, you'll get a notification. You'll have 24 hours to decide. It might show 4Cs. It might show, you know, Gillette and you can, you know, may even be able to pick and choose. So right now, those are the sites and you would just do that through the pre-registration tool. And again, that's from going to our website, just clicking on this or going directly to the website on mass.gov. So right over in here. If you click up here where it's the community health center, they're not set up yet on Color and I don't know whether they will be. A lot of it has to do with difficulty billing with the way the system's set up. So, you know, the administration costs. So if you click on the here, you end up on this website. And this is the Community Health Center of Cape Cod. And look up here in the upper corner, you see the, click here to schedule a vaccine clinic for Thursday, April 29th at the fairgrounds. Click here to schedule one at the Christ the King Church in Mashpee. And the reason why there's two different ones is on the 30th, we're using the fairgrounds for a second dose clinic for a previous clinic that was already done by the county. So the county is using the fairgrounds on the 30th. So there'll be a clinic on the Christ of King Church and a clinic at the fairgrounds on the same day. So that's how you would register for a shot. So again, vaccine can either be done at a pharmacy, either registering at mass.gov or going directly to the community health center as well. So that's all win-win for us. They're looking to do about 1,000 to 2,000 vaccines per week.
Nice.
That's a nice increase. The county, Barnstable County is still seeing their 3,500 to 4,000. So that's pretty good. So again, the consortium's program of using Cape Cod Healthcare to call seniors has not gone away. So again, calling all seniors, people that are having difficulty with this program, difficulty with the computer, call the senior center. If you know somebody who has not been vaccinated in your neighborhood and it's maybe because they haven't been successful in getting themselves registered, they can call the senior center. We'll help them and somebody from Cape Cod Healthcare will call and get them, get them an appointment. Okay? Homebound, where everybody who's contacted us from homebound is either scheduled or been vaccinated. Again, that'll continue as time progresses as we find more and more people that are truly homebound. Again, if you know somebody who's homebound, you get them to call the senior center. Again, then, and Jill's done an awesome job, her, her staff at getting that taken care of. So that's where, that's the landscape this week, subject to change at a moment's notice, but that's the landscape of this week for the vaccine. Where do we stand vaccinated? The county is 59% with one dose and 41% with fully vaccinated, which is a 3 and 4% increase from last week. Falmouth, we are at 61% or 18,891 individuals who have had at least one dose. We're 42% fully vaccinated with 13,172. So that's fully vaccinated individuals. And so that's a pretty good number. That's a little higher than the county's average. You can see that we're like well into the mid-90 percentile for first doses and over 83% of 75. And we work our way down. The biggest increase that you'll see is people that have become more recently eligible. So you see the younger groups getting a higher percentage because at some point you get to vaccine refusal. You won't get to 100%. So 61%. Now, the maximum amount of people that could get vaccinated in Falmouth, the theoretical maximum, because you can't vaccine, vaccinate those at this point under the age of 16, would be somewhere around 86%. So if everybody who was over the age of 16, 16 and older got vaccinated, it would be somewhere around 86. So we're getting there. So we're, if you look at it this way, if it's 86, we're almost halfway there now with those that are eligible. We're at 42%. So that's a good sign. I think, you know, we're in mid-April still now towards, you know, we're at the end of April now and things are looking pretty good. And with the increase in doses, that should only make it things easier for, for vaccinated. In terms of our cases, another good.
Before you leave the one, for, you know, youth under 16, are there exceptions made for underlying conditions?
I don't think so. You'd have to, physician would be able to answer that question. I do not believe, I do not, I have not heard of such.
Okay.
That. So in terms of cases, you know, we had that large increase early, early in the month. You can see they've had four consecutive, three consecutive weeks of lower numbers. This week, we're, I take this every Thursday afternoon. So since Thursday afternoon, we've had 15. I know Mr. Patterson, Selectman Patterson likes to ask me where the cases are coming from. It's a much lower infection rate person, group to group. It's really, you're seeing household clusters that are like four and five. So if you have three, let's say three families with five cases, there's half your cases for the week. It's only three places where it's spread. But because the state had just said about 30% of the cases in the state are the B-117, which we know are more, more easily spreadable by somewhere around 60%, it's really hard once you're in a household, if you've got the B-117, to keep it from others in the household. So what might have spread to two, two and a half people might spread to three, three and a half people. So part of that's the reason why we're getting the increase. We're definitely seeing a drop in cases, which makes sense. On the upper left-hand corner, you can see that our average age of throughout the pandemic has been 48 years old. Prior to March 1st of this past year was 50 because since March 1st of this year, the, the average age was 39.5. And if you take just this month, month, the average age is 36.5. So because we're vaccinating the older group, right, the younger group is really the exposed group. You can see that the case, the cases are hitting the younger, younger groups. So our current case count being 1,515. In terms of our case, one of the things that we've done really well, we've had this red, yellow and, and green chart and gray. Falmouth, typical Falmouth, towns, Falmouth size have not had as many good yellow days, not that yellow's good. I mean, non-red days. We've only had two weeks of red, which I think is pretty good for us, considering our size and complexity. We have lots of businesses, lots of moving parts, lots of medical facilities, things of that nature. Now, we've only had two weeks of, of red. So that's encouraging. You can see that the county's still got some red, but it is definitely better by nearly a full percentage point positivity. Cases are that, that mid, mid-Cape outbreak that we've had is, is on the way down. And a lot of that's got to do with vaccinations. So I'm going to stop sharing, stop talking and see if you guys have any questions for me.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions?
Good news.
Mm-hmm.
Typical, my question I always ask, so would you say active cases is about in the 80s to 90s right now?
Total number?
Yeah.
Probably less. Yeah. Somewhere around there.
And I know the governor has not changed this. What would you recommend? Or if the governor did recommend, how would you feel about the masking outside? Are we ready to get rid of that mandate?
Uh, it, it's, you're so much less likely to get COVID outside that it's a relatively safe activity. But I mean, there's different activities. Again, I haven't season tickets for the Patriots. You are very, very shoulder to shoulder while you're trying to go through the, the gate. So I would say that would be a place you'd want to wear it. But outside, you know, running your dog on the beach when there's no one around is safe without a mask. I mean, it's not going to travel 50 feet through the air like that, but.
So maintaining the signs on the bike path, maybe we don't need to do at some.
Well, I wouldn't leave any of that off in my personally until the governor says it's okay. I, I don't, I, we have been pretty tried and true of staying with the guidance.
Great. Thank you.
And I'm not trying to give my personal opinion on it, you know, so I, I kind of been going with the guidance to be consistent. So I wouldn't, my personal opinion, do anything to change, you know, whether I agree. Do anything to change, you know, whether I agree with it or not. Um, I don't personally agree with the strictness of the beach regulations going forward, knowing that I think we know what's going to happen. But I think what's going to happen is the governor and reasonable upon a time, other, the state should be loosening up some of that guidance.
Thank you.
It does model behavior for other people, even when the risk is low.
Yep. Any other questions for Scott?
I'm just going to comment that, and like on the bike path, you are pretty close and somebody could sneeze and, you know. Still get a hit, even though it's outside.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's good, it, the magnitude's lower. Um, we're not really contact traced anything ever to the bike path and to the, you know, to the beach per se or. Or outdoor. But does the say it can't happen would be wrong of me as well.
The households have to get their infection from someplace.
Well, it's generally, it generally comes down to the more obvious reasons, you know, so you went to a dentist appointment and you had somebody there, you know, you. Or you went, I won't pick on dentists, but you went to someplace or you went to a birthday party. You know, and now, and now with this variant, you know, that birthday party might get 12 people instead of last time it would have gotten seven. Right. Just because it's, you know, a bit more. And that's usually where, that's where we're seeing the cases, you know, into the household clusters.
And, and just a reminder that sometimes, you know, just wearing those masks can kind of reduce the anxiety for some folks who really. Do worry. So, you know, and, and that we were hearing from saying, I'm afraid to go out. To, to the bike path. I'm afraid to kind of, so even if the science may say something slightly different, I think. Um, you know, being able to kind of, you know, that, just that community service of allowing other folks to enjoy. The outdoors, um, you know, is also a piece of it until we can get to a different place.
New way to be polite.
And it's going to be a transition to trusting the vaccine and trust. There's going to be a level of trust and each person has a different level of when they're going to trust. You know, loosening up when the guidance does.
Different level of risk, different level of trust. So um, anything else for Scott? Yep, Doug Brown.
So Scott, that map you just showed was pretty recent and there's still a lot of towns in the red, huh?
Yeah.
Governor's not going to be lifting the order anytime soon, really, right?
Well, I think he's going to look at it from a statewide level. Um, but yeah, I mean, vaccine uptake is not going to be, isn't as good in all areas. And so I think, you know, the reason why the guidance may not, you know, let's say we're not getting very many cases. And our vaccination rate's really high, but the state still might be lagging in the guidance because it's going to take the, the collective. You know, it's going to look at the big picture and if some towns, you know, vaccine uptake is 30%. And they're still averaging 300 cases a week, you know. I don't know whether he's going to pick and choose if there's still 15 communities that's having that happen.
And if we get to the start of July and those towns still haven't come around and we're at 90% or whatever is our goal. We might have to consider if we want to stay with the state regulations, I guess, at that point.
Well, we really have to stay with, I mean, we're going to be bound by the governor's regulations. I mean, I know there's some. Some things he hasn't commented on specifically that, that there may be some room on, but you know, his regulations regarding. Um, you know, whatever regulations are in place about restaurants or about anything else. I mean, we are not going to be able to overturn that.
So we're going to be having people come from all parts of Massachusetts and other states that may be coming from red areas.
Yep.
I mean, if, if last year's any indicator, we had no vaccine, we still didn't know a lot about it and our case counts were really low. So let's hope the summer. The vaccination rates, you know, would be, you know, really low. But to answer Doug's question, do we have guidance that reflects. Conditions in Falmouth? No, you're going to have guidance that reflects conditions at the state level.
Yep.
Much like the vaccine needs to get to other countries like India that are having a huge outbreak. So we get to get some vaccine down there because the last thing you want is some. You know, weird variant to sort of emerge that sort of has to start over. I certainly do not want to start this again.
Yeah, I, I.
So not that that would happen, but I mean, you know, you could get a variant and make confusion, you know, slows the whole process down. So you're really going to, you know. Again, we're all floating on the same rock together. So we have to make sure we vaccinate.
Yeah, hopefully they'll have some boosters coming along that cover some of the variants that aren't covered by the current vaccines.
So let's get through the first one, but yes, they probably will. Let's, let's, let's finish up what we have. We're not that far ahead.
We're get, we're getting there.
Vaccinate, I'm very happy with the rates. I mean, it was really, really frustrating for everybody to try to get vaccinated. At the beginning, but uh, you know, it took a little while for the groove and I think we were all got, you know. Y'all should have a pretty good chance. If you're really struggling, call the hell, I guess we're at a point now, you should. Call the senior center if you're a senior. I mean, you, you should be able to get a vaccine relatively quickly right now.
But, but one thing I do want to say is this, this board, along with the other local legislators, along with Scott. Um, town staff really pushed hard in that beginning. And I do think for a while we weren't being heard. And then I do think that the, the message was received that we were kind of an outlier in terms of getting. Vaccines down to a population where the demographic was in high need early on. Um, and it did feel like there was a shift at some point where suddenly, um, you know, you were hearing about people being able to get vaccinated. So. Um, it, it does feel different.
That was the consortium, the consortium getting the vaccines over to Cape Cod Healthcare and circumventing the, what I call the chocolate, Willy Wonka Chocolate Factory. Golden ticket system really helped because we started with a software program and used the. The demographic, you know, an age group that has the most difficulty with a computer without working all the bugs out. And that's not the, it's the state, it's not us, but, but that, that was the word, the part about it that was difficult. We see we own pandemic plans. We've been planning on it as health agents for years. They just didn't utilize the plans. And by switching it this way, you're kind of starting from scratch in November to whenever they started and it kind of got real. You know, difficult. And part of that's because the vaccine's so hard to handle. They didn't want each individual health department sort of handling the pet. Yeah, I can see why they did what they did.
Well, it's good. We're in a much better place. Any other questions for Scott? Scott, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Um, okay, next we have update and discussion on proposed police department renovation. Um, so I just want to start, um, the reason why we have this on our agenda is. Um, and I know a couple of the members of the board touched on this um, at the beginning of the meeting. And that was really um, some frustration with the fact that that particular article didn't pass. And that, you know, we felt that there had been some sort of bumps in the process. Um, and I know we, we talked a little bit about what the process was at town meeting. Um, Jennifer shared kind of how, how the timeline had played out. But um, you know, in reflecting on um, how we got from point A to point B. Uh, with that particular article, um, you know, I had a discussion after town meeting with Julian and Peter. And um, you know, we just recognized that it didn't go as it should have, even with some of the bumps. That we knew we kind of couldn't control and getting the numbers at the right time. There really should have been um, more information that came to this board. Um, in advance, even though it's not an, an article that we wrote the recommendation on, that we should have had more information. Um, to be able to potentially speak on it at town meeting if any member of the board felt so inclined. Um, and that we just, we felt that there was a breakdown in the way that. Um, things normally work really well, which is that Jennifer kind of transmits information, finance committee has that. Can make a recommendation on it. And it felt like that didn't go, um, you know, kind of according to plans. And we wanted to make sure we addressed how that process failed. How we can correct it, um, and then just speak more broadly about this particular project. Um, and so that this board can answer, um, you know, have any questions answered and, and we can shepherd this through. Uh, hopefully for a positive vote in November. Um, so that is why it's on here tonight. So I'll let Julian, if you want to. Kind of add to that or kick it off.
I just want to say that you, we need to get the finance committee involved too, because of their hesitancy. That was the commentary right there. So until we get finance committee on board and convince them, and they're a pretty objective body. Listen, I don't think they're prejudiced against the police department and, you know, public safety. Uh, but there was a step missed there.
Yes. And that's what we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, just sort of sort through what step was missed and what happened and how we can avoid that. So, um, go ahead, Julian.
Thank you, man, chair, members of the board. Yeah, we're starting down that road. Uh, first, I, I do want to apologize to the finance committee, the select board and town meeting members for placing you. In a difficult and awkward position regarding this important renovation project due to the late timing. Of our receipt of the final cost estimate. In retrospect, given the unfortunate delay we experienced, it would have been preferable to recommend an indefinite postponement. Until the next town meeting. I take full responsibility for this as town manager and ask for the continued consideration of the select board. The finance committee and ultimately town meeting members to consider supporting this needed renovation project. At the upcoming November town meeting. And again, this is, uh, we're starting down that road in speaking with the board. Uh, this, we have a short updated PowerPoint summary uh, to uh, prevent, present the details of this renovation project. And obviously we'll be working with the finance committee and ultimately town meeting with the concurrence of this select board that we do so. So we have a PowerPoint to put up on the screen and Jennifer, uh. Jennifer. Yeah, Jennifer Mullen is with us as well as Chief Edward Dunn in the event there are any questions also. Uh, so why don't we go to the second slide? The police department has not been renovated since 1984. The consolidated communications that are located in the basement of the current police station. Have caused a change in the way that the main floor is laid out. That has created a utili, an empty space where previously police dispatch had been located again in that. Main, main floor of uh, uh, the, the main central portion of the main floor of the police department. In November of 2017, $50,000 was appropriated for feasibility and redesign of the police station. And we worked with a local architect on a space needs study. Next slide. In March of 2020, we received a floor plan on the redesign that we're proposing and an estimate. Unfortunately, it did not include prevailing wage and uh, details on the HVAC system. The pandemic that began in March of 2020 in earnest uh, for us here, put this project on temporary hold. In November of last year, we procured an architect for design documents and the comprehensive cost estimate. We did receive a cost estimate in the middle of March of this year, which was deemed too costly. And with the assistance of a finance director, Jennifer Mullen, we were able to rework that estimate. To get a final number, but that was not until the end of March of this year. So uh, not even quite a month ago. Uh, when we finally received that updated estimate. The detailed cost estimate, the current and future floor plan is, has been included in the select board's packet. The construction cost estimate is $1,129,547. With a 5% contingency and an additional $65,000. Required for uh, the architect, including construction documents, bidding and construction oversight. We're requesting an additional $77,000 for uh, important construction contingency. Contingency to cover that eventuality. We would be moving the records room to uh, that central location in the main floor of the police station. Where previously the dispatch function had been located. The records room then would become a publicly accessible training room and community meeting room. Uh, which can be easily accessed by the public uh, through a uh, a, really a new transitional uh, entryway. Uh, which is, uh, will be much more energy efficient than the current entry uh, into the police station. And it can be also be accessed not going into the uh, uh, the, the more off limits areas of the police department. The previous training room will be redesigned for offices thereby. And we have uh, some uh. Sketches that, which we can provide, but we can also answer questions as we look at the sketches or in the meantime. Uh, and as I noted, uh, Jennifer Mullen and Ed Dunn can join me in answering questions and I welcome. Their assistance and comments on anything I may have inadvertently overlooked. Did we want to go to the uh, plans at this point or answer questions? Happy to do either one or both.
Um, Nancy, you had your hand up.
Yes, um, I just wanted to echo um, everything that the, the chair said about the process. I'm not sure where it got derailed. But I think we need to look more closely at that. I actually visited the police station with. The, my plans and the, this uh, PowerPoint um, in hand. And I would hope the board would just give me a little latitude so that I could. Sort of speak to the notes that I took because it's one thing to look at. This sketch, which I'm not a, a visual spatial person, I have to actually see it. Um, and so I went over and took a look myself. Um, would it be okay if I just read from my notes, Madam Chair?
Yes, yep, go ahead.
So, um, it was interesting that the building was built in 69 and renovated in 84 and still has the back brick wall. I thought that was kind of funny with, with the window spaces. Um, the request as I understand it, and, and please, um, Ms. Ms. Mullen or Mr. Suso or certainly Chief Dunn. Um, if I mess this up in any way, please let me know. But the current request is based only on a first floor repurposing. Of current space. Is that correct? They're not looking to build upward or outward? So it's a first floor plan to repurpose um, space. Um, and I understand that the B, the. The front space of the building will be refocused on uh, public access records, which I understand. Is, makes up about 85% of the daily visits to the Falmouth Police Department. Is that accurate? So people who go in, um, and they need to have access and it needs to be accessed so that. The people in the records room see the public coming in. 85% of the uh, visits during the day. Um, are directed to the uh, record. Um, I was also sort of embarrassed about the um. The officer's workspace. When I looked at that and I saw that there were six sergeants. That share a 15 by 13 foot office space. And so you have the desks in there that they have to share and it, it felt to me like a little bit. Um, like it was claustrophobic and that you're not, we're not providing appropriate workspace for, for some employees. So that was something that, that threw me. Um, the other piece that I, that I was um. Really in favor of was the training, the state of the art training center for our police officers. Um, I don't think we have an updated building that provides this. And I, I just thought that that was. That's just not okay, given what has changed um, in policing since 1984. So creating those training spaces, including a, a space for a simulator, which I think is on Chief Dunn's wishlist to. Buy and to do trainings with our officers. I also noted that um. That first big training room that will also be in the front of the building will be available for, for public use as well. Um, and then the last piece that I really questioned um, Chief Dunn about is that. I was embarrassed for the office space that the domestic violence um, worker is in. It is not a place that is private. It, it's a place that is created um, with walls of, of um. Cabinets. I could hear over the top of it. And I thought, wow, you know, if you, if you're working with victims of domestic violence, you do not want a room that, that people can hear. And then the other piece that I thought was, was interesting was that you, you have to walk through certain offices to get to certain rooms. So that the layout, um, from my perspective only certainly does not work. Um, and, and again, I just really needed to go over there and look at it for myself and get a sense of what these plans really meant. Because looking at the plan is, is not helpful to me. I mean, I'm sure it's helpful to Doug Brown and people who do this kind of work. But it did not make any sense for me. So from my perspective. Um, and perhaps shame on me for not getting more information prior to town meeting. But um, I, I certainly support this wholeheartedly. And I think that um, providing appropriate space for our officers is really, really important. And lastly, the only other point I will make is that I believe that it's really hard enough to be a police officer right now. Um, that we need to be taking better care of them in terms of providing healthy office space and um. Their, and their workspace every day.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you. Any other questions from the board or comments from the board?
All right, just second what Nancy says, it's a shame that we. I wish I could have spoke in favor of it. If I had even seen the plan, I could have maybe spoken in favor. I just didn't have anything.
Yeah, so I just want to go, yeah, and, and that touches on what I, I just wanted to make really clear. And we get it, these things sometimes don't come in until the 11th hour, but sort of conceptually, the idea was floating out there for a while. And I, and I do want to emphasize that this board, even though we don't make the recommendation on it, we really. on it, we really do need to see, you know, even if the the information, we take it with the caveat that Jen is still working really hard to get those numbers where they need to be, we do need to have that in advance because I think the board was caught really without any information and and at a town meeting where, you know, that rigorous debate is what town meeting is for. You know, any board can make a recommendation and town meeting can ultimately do whatever they want to do. This board was not able to participate. And so I do think that we we need to make sure that we're seeing that information in advance so that we can at least speak with some knowledge, even if it's, you know, even if finance committee were to have still voted IP, this board would have been able to speak with some knowledge in either direction. Again, just that we would have had it in front of us.
I think you could say the same thing for the finance committee. If they had seen and had some sense of the the functional changes that would be created by re reallocating the floor space and making some changes, they would have supported this. I mean, I it's the first time I've heard any kind of a sense of the functional reasons for making these changes and for incurring that cost.
Chief or Julian or Jen, any comments?
I've made a number of them, so I'll defer to Jennifer and and take care to comment as well.
Yeah, I'll I'll make a comment because I, you know, we did a lot of work on this project and, you know, hindsight's 2020. And I always look back and see, you know, what I could have done differently and I should have been more assertive in, you know, the finance committee works in a way where they have liaisons to departments. And so when they, when the articles come out for town meeting, they, the chair of the finance committee puts, you know, liaisons to each article. So they're like, so they go and talk to the police chief and then they come back and they make a presentation to the full finance committee. That's kind of how the, just so to get the lay of the land, that's kind of how the finance committee works. Department heads don't usually go in and present to the finance committee. And so, you know, in the future, you know, with a big project like this, I think the other thing I need to say is that we never could get a good grasp on the number because we weren't, we were reworking the offices and we wanted to see what we could do with the HVAC system and just never had a good grasp. Usually we do and we didn't. We really needed that comprehensive cost estimate and that came in, you know, and then we had to rework that number. So I should have, you know, contacted the liaisons of the finance committee and had them make the presentation. So in in the future, I think we're all aware that, you know, we need to do a better job and, you know, I do apologize. And then I just have to say that the night of town meeting, when the finance committee was meeting that night to to it was on their agenda, they knew they had, they were going to take up the police department renovation the night of town meeting. I lost all audio on my computer and I could not, I was so flustered, I just couldn't get it to work. I had to actually switch computers and then on the new computer, I wasn't going to be able to share a screen where I had the information. So it just was just, it was like a perfect storm. And so, you know, I, nothing I can do about the technology part of it. I couldn't foresee that, but you know, sometimes I think that if I did have better, you know, if my computer was working that night and I didn't have to go to my personal computer, then, you know, maybe I would have been able to share the documents. But, you know, again, we look back on it and we learn about it and we've done a lot of work on this project. It's a good project and, you know, and I appreciate, you know, the board's support and, you know, we're just, you know, we're always looking to see what we can do. I mean, I think everybody knows we're pretty transparent and if anybody asks any questions, we have the information. You know, we don't, we don't withhold information. We I've put a lot of information in that warrant booklet every year and, you know, if anybody contacts me and they want information, I give it to them. So I just, you know, I look back on it and, you know, moving forward, you know, just take this as a lesson and try to be a little bit more assertive.
Thank you, Jen. I really appreciate you and Julian both just, you know, acknowledging where the the pieces, you know, kind of fell off. And I think this board has a responsibility to to push, you know, more as well. And one other, I just want to clarify one thing because in having some and and getting some feedback from folks about this, I was informed that members, just the way you described finance committee operating, which is how it operated when I was on finance committee, where you, you know, you go and you're a liaison and you dig a little deeper and you ask the questions, you meet with the department heads. I was told that that process was no longer allowed, that the liaisons have to go through sort of town administrators to get to department heads?
No, that's not correct. I have the list of the town meeting warrant articles in, you know, the chair of the finance committee assigned the liaisons. And one of the other thing that happens is usually the liaisons to the certain departments, usually it was Dutch and Nick. And I think you remember that, Megan, right?
Yep.
And so the Friday before town meeting, I had a call from Nick and Nick was asking me, you know, what the number was and how much in free cash and we had a, you know, we had a discussion. And so in my mind, I think I'm talking to the liaison to the police department, but it wasn't, it was two other members of the finance committee. And so they have been operating that way. I have been suggesting, just so you know, moving forward. So when we come up in June, there's four easement articles from Amy Lowell and we just don't have agreements from the owners right now. So I have been sending emails out and I've suggested and I in the finance committee chair actually agreed and Amy Lowell has asked to come in and speak to the whole committee. So I think, you know, moving forward, if department heads can come in and present to the whole committee, instead of presenting to liaisons that present to the committee, I think, you know, that would be helpful because then we're presenting the information once and we're having a good presentation and all town staff is there to answer questions. So Amy will be coming in, I think, on next Tuesday to talk about the SOAR project. So we're definitely making, you know, I think some changes are being made and.
No barrier.
Getting ready for June.
Yeah, but there's no barrier. I mean, if if I I used to be on the IT, I would still go and and meet with Greg and go through his budget with him.
Right.
Okay.
So they're still, they're still doing that, but we, you know, we're also want to, you know, try to have, you know, presentations as well with with the department heads.
Great, thank you.
You have to recognize that working through the the lens of Zoom webinars is a real significant filter in terms of getting a real sense of what people are trying to communicate to you and 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 the ability to anticipate and ask questions is so that that could easily be a big factor. So thanks for all your hard work. We're going to make it happen. I'm I'm quite confident of that.
Chief, any final words?
No, you know, I was shocked myself that it didn't pass. But again, other than Jennifer and 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 Julian, nobody had really asked any questions. Nobody even been in the building. I will offer to the to this board and to anybody that wants to walk through that building, a tour of the building as Nancy did today. I was that I was very appreciative of her time to come in and to see firsthand the condition of the building. It's long overdue, would like a new police station? Absolutely. But I realize with everything going on, that's not going to happen. So if we can get a few more years out of this by repurposing what we have, would be grateful.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. We appreciate it. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back to the agenda, we have an updated report on building permits. We had a letter in our packet. And I see Rod Palmer is with us.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, welcome.
All right. Hi. I'm not sure if, I mean, I'm on my cell phone here, so.
Yeah, we, we can see you, but that's okay. We can hear you pretty clearly and we did, you know, receive the update. If you just kind of want to go through it and then the board can ask any questions.
Okay, sounds good.
It looks like it said as of April 21st, you had 112 building permit applications on hold and acknowledged that they're waiting, you're waiting for additional documentation on those particular permits. And there are 43 building permit applications currently under review and 36 newly submitted building permit applications. And then in an effort to handle the recent volume of building permit application submissions, individuals, oh, we can see you now, individuals in our department have been working overtime, including Saturdays over these past few weeks. So thank you for that update. And then if you want to just add anything else to it.
I I think really the only thing to add is, you know, we have permize on the horizon that will make a significant change, you know, with the volume that we have. I think it's going to take online permitting to to correct the problem that we have. Right now, we have folks that are working, individuals that are working on Saturdays to try to keep our heads above water. So we have made some progress with having people work on Saturdays and I think we also have approval from management to hire temporary help to to help the situation. So I think I think we're in a pretty good place to get through this volume that we have.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Nancy.
Yes, so I actually met with the building commissioner and Mr. Suso and went and actually saw how the the office functions. And I got a really good explanation around what it means when a building permit is on hold and acknowledged by the person who has filed the building permit. So because one of my concerns was, again, Doug, Doug Brown might understand this, but building is not my area of expertise. So when I see those high numbers, it sort of set off red flags, but when you go through it and you sift through some of the reasons why they're they're on hold, it really becomes much, much clearer. And some of them are on hold because of the person requesting the permit. You know, that they they, I I saw several that were backed off on because it was COVID. So they decided they didn't want to necessarily move forward with the plan. So I I found that really helpful. And I'm glad, Rod, that while it wasn't in your report that you did sort of outline your action plan moving forward because to me, I want to make sure that we continue to support the building department with additional help if it's needed, term or long term, with the overtime piece of people that are already working in the office and then certainly with the software that's coming. But the software is six to 12 months out. So I was really wanting to make sure that that what was presented to the board is that we we continue to acknowledge this issue. The data for me is much clearer. And thirdly, we have an action plan moving forward.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. Any other questions or comments from the board? Go ahead, Sam Patterson.
You know, I just want to say how important that your department is, Rod. I mean, it's so critical to so many citizens and so many contractors in town. So I hope you're actually thinking about the future and how we can do a better job of servicing our community. That's that's the thing that has come through. And I have to say, this is not the first time this has happened. I've heard complaints from contractors for years and years. Now, as you're pointing out, it's likely to be in part their problem because they haven't provided the necessary information. So I take it all with a grain of salt, but I do just want us to recognize how important your service is and it costs people a lot of money if things get held up. So and certainly in this time when material costs are just jumping up at the rate of 25 to 50% every couple of months, it's, you know, it's delays are huge. So so anyway, what, anything we can do to improve our service to the community in in the building department would, I think, really be a great service to the town.
And I'd like to continue working with Commissioner Palmer and the town manager to make sure that we are moving forward. I think we have a plan in place. I think we've dissected the problem. And I agree, Sam, it's been a, it's been a recurring issue, but I I'm feeling like we've made some change and I'm hoping to to keep that going. And I'm hoping that we'll get updates frequently.
Doug Brown?
I just want to say, I appreciate the extra effort and the working Saturdays and the bringing in the additional staff and whatever it takes because, you know, it really is the economic driver of this community. And so if we can't get the permits, we can't get the work done, you know, it's a big impact on the economy. So I appreciate you recognizing the importance of it and taking the extra effort to do the Saturdays.
I appreciate, I appreciate your support. I just think in this day and age, the ultimate solution is to have online permitting.
Yes.
We have so many applications in our office that are dormant because of simple information missing. It could be contact information, it could be plans, it could be insurance information. And for those communities that have online permitting, until those fields are complete, the application cannot be submitted. So it it's going to make it easier for the applicant as the applicant sometimes just misses these bits of information, you know, as though it it were not reviewed. So the the permize will act as a proofreader for a lot of the applicants and making sure that their applications are complete. So I think it will be the ultimate solution for this volume. So I'm looking forward to it.
Great, but I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that we have some sort of remedial steps in place, you know, before, because we know that that's coming. So that idea of getting that extra help and coming in on those Saturdays so that we're not just building up that backlog. So that's great and we'll, we'll get some more, you know, reports as time goes on. So thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I agree that 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 is a great solution, but I don't want to wait for that to be in place to address the current issue. So we have to do both at the same time. And and I think I think that that's what we're doing and I think I feel like we've got a good plan. I just want to see it keep going.
Thank you. Thanks, Rod. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to have an update and discussion on the lease of 300 Dillingham Avenue for the Veteran Center. And Peter Johnson Staub has kind of a slight review. If this board recalls, we had. Well, let me, let me have Peter go through it and then we can have the conversation. Will be easier. Go ahead, Peter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as Chair English Braga was describing, we, since the board last had an update on this issue, which was at the end of February, there was some questions raised about what the legal implications of the town meeting articles on the subject were. And there's been some ongoing dialogue among the the veterans organizations. So we thought this would be a good time to go over the steps that led to where we are today and and provide a bit of an update.
You're just, volume's a little bit low, maybe you're.
Is this better?
Yes, sir.
Great. Now, if I can get my slide to advance, we'll be all set. So there were three town meeting votes that preceded that that the town meeting has taken regarding this matter. It started in November of 2019 with Article 23. That was a petition article that was brought forward by Ahmed Mustafa, among others. Ahmed was the the lead petitioner. The presentation at town meeting for that article was made by Alan Wilson, who was an officer of the Joe Q Veterans, Joe Q Coffee Veterans Group. And that presentation described a unified veteran services center that would be jointly jointly operated by inclusive of all of the local veterans organizations, including the Falmouth Veterans of Foreign War Post 2569, the Joe Q Coffee Veterans Group, the disabled veterans, among others. So that article was essentially a sentiment of the meeting vote in that it authorized the select board to negotiate a lease, which is an authority that the the board has under general laws that's very specific to veterans agencies and more on that in a moment. But at that time, it was not ripe for action because there were some underlying issues that needed to be addressed before a lease of the of the building for that purpose could take place. So those issues were addressed at the following town meeting in April of 2020. Article 19 changed the zoning and Article 20 transferred the land from the jurisdiction of the school committee to the select board. Since that time, it has been, it has been our objective to carry out the intent of town meeting. That Article 23 of November of 2019 was approved handily, if not unanimously. that Article 23 of November of 2019 was approved handily, if not unanimously. And so, we, with the support of the select board, engaged the the parties to move that process forward. And the town council and our office provided some guidance to the Veterans of Foreign War and the Joe Q Coffee Group in developing a memorandum of coordination that would outline the relationship of the parties as part of the lease. But unfortunately, those ultimately, those attempts at reaching an agreement were not successful. The VFW and Joe Q Coffee Group and the other organizations involved couldn't quite get to agreement on how the lease, sorry, how the Veterans Service Center would be operated. So, that led to the meeting with the the board on February 22. I'm sorry, I'm going to go back. I I want to make sure that it's it is clear. We did have town council look carefully at the town meeting articles that were approved to determine if we could move forward with a competitive request for proposals process, notwithstanding the town meeting vote that that authorized the select board to enter a lease specifically with the Veterans of Foreign War. And town council did affirm that 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 approval of Article 23 does not preclude the town from issuing a competitive request for proposals. Under a separate general law, the board has the authority to enter a lease for purposes that it outlines. So, just to conclude, we're even since February 22, there was yet another attempt to bring the parties together to see if they could work out their differences. There were a number of meetings, but again, they were ultimately not successful. So, we just want to reiterate that we are prepared to proceed with developing a request for proposals. That RFP would not be a wide open, you know, top dollar situation. As we discussed with the board back in February, we would limit that potential respondents to not-for-profit and public agencies for the specific purpose of order of operating a Veterans Services Center. So, that's that's pretty much it. That's where we stand. And if the board has any questions or thoughts on how to proceed, we welcome that.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate it. You know, really why we're talking about this again tonight is that, you know, we felt that, you know, town meeting was really presented with a very specific picture of what this was going to look like. In other words, you know, they really heard about this alliance between VFW and Joe Q Coffee Hour. The, you know, I think we recall the moderator kind of coming down from where he normally would preside over town meeting and speaking in a very personal way about Joe Q and and what he meant to him and to this community. And so, you know, in as this has unfolded, it felt right to come back, whether or not we had it solely in our authority to do so. It felt right to come back and publicly just review how we got to where we are today and, you know, emphasize the fact that many, many efforts have been placed or have been put into trying to bring the two groups together to find a way to honor really what town meeting was presented with and ultimately voted on. And it felt it was incumbent upon us to make sure that, you know, all entities involved or concerned with the issue understood why this board had voted to go forward with an RFP and to confirm that it was within the authority of the board to do so. So, that's why we're, I know we voted back in February. We've held off on the RFP because there were some hopes that we could salvage a partnership between the two groups. And unfortunately, that hasn't come to pass. But it felt it was appropriate to really, you know, explain the process again to the public and just put it on our agenda in case anybody had comments or concerns. So, that's really, there isn't an additional vote. We've already voted about the RFP. It's really just to make sure people understand why we are at this particular point. Doug Brown?
You know, we had originally, the intent was to lease to the VFW and then they would welcome other groups. And then the Joe Q Veterans Coffee Break Group felt like they wanted a little more reassurance that they were going to have a key to the building and have a permanent setup. And I guess the VFW group felt like that was infringing on their primary position. So, I just wanted to explain a little bit of the the dynamics of the disagreement. So, it's just unfortunate. And I almost felt like we should just say that, you know, we're going to lease it to the VFW and Joe Q's a subleasee, but we can't order them to get along. It's just, it's a very troubling situation. I'm very, very sad about it.
It is. And and the the reality is the longer, you know, the reality is veterans are not getting services in a building that could be a great resource. And, you know, that is, at the end of the day, the goal is to get services to the veterans in our community, right? Whatever that service might be, a place to come together and connect, a place to be able to, you know, provide guidance on real services individuals might need, you know, outside with providers. And so, you know, I think we gave a lot of time to try to have this process played out and a lot of individuals tried to make it work. But at the end of the day, at this point, here we are, all this time after town meeting, and there still isn't an organization in that building providing services to veterans.
There's another need, which is just storage of materials and and accessories to go along in providing these services, which are now stored in people's houses or storage units, or trailer in the backyard. It's, you know, they deserve better and we should get something done.
So, that's why we are here tonight. And so, we just want to make sure the public understood that. And then we've already voted and have Peter and Julian move forward on the RFP, which we will, I'm sure, see a draft of at some point. Great. Any other questions for Peter or Julian? Okay. Thanks, Peter, for putting that together.
Thank you.
Helpful to see it. Okay, we are now going to have Maggie Downey from Cape Light Compact give us an update. Welcome, Maggie.
Good evening, everyone. I guess my video, you have to turn on my video. And I have a presentation that should be in your board packet. And if I can share my screen, I'll be ready to roll.
There you go. You're awesome. You're you're, can you see that? Your presentation is up?
Yes, the co-host has asked you, okay, start my video. Okay.
There you go.
Thanks, everybody.
We can see you. We can hear you. We got your presentation. Welcome. Go right ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience for this evening. I know you have a very, very busy agenda. So, I'll get right to it. And then if you have questions, I'll I'll take them as I go or Madam Chair or at the end, whatever you decide.
Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Maggie Downey. I'm the administrator for the Cape Light Compact. And I'm here for our annual update. I can't remember if I did last year in 2022 COVID or if it was at the at the end. But regardless, I'll get started. If I go to the next slide, there we go. So, Cape Light Compact, and the 21 towns, 15 on the Cape, six on the Vineyard have been administering our energy efficiency programs locally since 2001. It's been 20 years. And during in that time, so the data that I'm going to talk about goes through 2019. But we compact works in a calendar year. So, that was the last audited reported data. So, during from 2001 to 2019, we have reinvested $350 million and we've saved over 5.18 billion kilowatt hours through our energy efficiency programs. And then the stats that you see below, just to give you, what does that mean? That was the we saved energy, the equivalent of taking almost 800,000 cars, driving miles, average driving off the road for a year and 420 savings of almost $500,000, $500,000 homes energy use, annual energy use. So, I'm going to go to the next slide and talk a little bit about Falmouth. So, what have we done for Falmouth? This is the last 2018 to 2020 town-specific information. So, in the last three years, we have saved the town of Falmouth business and residents, including municipal buildings, over 30 million kilowatt hours in energy. So, we've lowered your energy overall consumption by that amount and reinvested $12.6 million in actual incentives back to residents and businesses in the community. And I wanted to show you, there's just a little bit of a quirk. We changed the way we report. In 2018, you could see 33,000 participants. How did that happen? That prior to a switch in how we report our data statewide, anytime you touched a program, meaning you might have had a home energy audit, that would be one participant. But then you filed a rebate for a dehumidifier. So, you got counted multiple times. It was a little confusing when people said, wait a minute, we don't have 33,000 people that live in businesses. So, now they're you're actually tracked by your cost electric account. So, that's just a difference in there. But you can see how many people have participated in the last two years. Next slide. So, we Cape Light Compact, like everybody else, this this meeting, we had to pivot in 2020 as a result of the COVID virus. We were shut down by from March until probably early summer. And during that time, we pivoted to offering virtual home energy assessments, because we weren't allowed onsite. And then we continued to with those for for residents. We offer both either customer choice, that we can either do a virtual home energy assessment with their iPhone, send in the information, and then we would send out the installers, or we could come on property. It kind of transitioned early on in 2020. People were most comfortable with virtual home energy assessments, but now people have kind of flipped and back to preferring in-home visits. We take, we wear full PPE gear. All the vendors have been trained in health protocols. And in order to recognize that many of our residents were out of work and were hurting financially, we, along with the rest of the utilities of Massachusetts, from June through September, increased our offer for insulation and air sealing up to 100%. Traditionally, it is for 75% up to, there's no cap on it, but we would pay 75% with energy efficiency funds. During that window, in order to stimulate work for not only our vendors, but to help out homeowners, it was 100% no-cost air sealing and insulation. We also ran an enhanced refrigerator and freezer recycling program. The traditional rebate is $75. And what that means is if you have an old refrigerator or freezer in your basement or your garage, if you have them in there now, we will come and take that away and recycle it and give you a $75 rebate towards hopefully the purchase of a new higher-efficiency refrigerator. Next slide. We also did something very similar for our businesses, excuse me, for small businesses through June of this year. We, this was a little slower to tick off, we are offering 100% incentive on LED lamps and fixtures, HVAC and lighting controls, as well as water-saving equipment and pipe insulation. There's also additional enhanced business incentives for kitchen equipment, all geared towards helping our businesses, especially our restaurant businesses. That's for the kitchen equipment who have been hit particularly hard during this pandemic. Next slide. We also have some, just touch a little bit on some new energy efficiency updates for you. We have new rebates for residential customers. We are now offering ground source heat pumps as well as traditional heat pumps. You can see mine over my shoulder. That's the traditional heat pump and air to air to water heat pumps. Again, the 2018, I'm sure you're very, all very familiar with the 2018 Amendment to the Green Communities Act and the recent climate legislation that passed is focusing on strategic electrification, moving, I think their their goal statewide is by 2030 to do a million homes and businesses to move them off of delivered fuels and on to electricity and then bringing where electricity would be generated from offshore wind and hydro and cleaner sources. We're also running our Main Street event and Falmouth, I believe, is scheduled for this fall. And what Main Street says is where we partner with Rise and NRM. So, Rise is our typical goes in as our small home, the small business assessment will look at lighting and motors and NRM does refrigeration. So, we do a blitz. The community is notified ahead of time. And we're, we do a one day. We bring everything with us on the truck so that your business is not closed down. You don't have to schedule time. You know, we're coming and we're in and out. And during that, we offer up to 100% incentives for eligible measures. And that's scheduled for Falmouth for the for the fall. Next slide. This is just a, you know, I normally would hand these out if we were there in person or leave behind. So, this just shows you what the 2021 rebates are. We are in, just for everybody, remind everybody, the last year of our three-year plan, 20, and we are in the process of preparing the 22 to 2024 Energy Efficiency Plan. So, our rebates change every year. Technologies change every year. So, this just gives you a snapshot of what's available for residential customers. I always encourage if you haven't had a home energy assessment to contact the Cape Light Compact. And even if you have, to take a look at our rebates, what's, give us a call. We're we're answering the phones. I'm in the office every day. So, we can see what works for you because, you know, even though you might have had something five, six, seven years ago, everything evolves. Lighting, you no longer have CFLs. Now, everything is LED. So, technology is moving very quickly in this space. And there may be something that is of interest that could help you continue to lower your overall energy consumption. Next slide. I just want to also give a shout out to our renter and income-eligible offer. Equity has been a major issue for our community or society over the last year, and it's going to be a big focus in our next three-year plan. But the Cape Light Compact and your board members, Ron Zweig, give a shout out to Ron and other members of your community have had a keen interest on making sure that our renters and our moderate income were served for many years. We were the first to pilot serving renters and moderate income with 100% offering for air sealing and insulation. This is now something that was adopted statewide. So, if you live, and again, it was designed because what we found is we couldn't, many renters paid the electric bill, but they didn't own the building and they couldn't engage their landlord to come up with a copay to invest in the building because they they weren't paying the utility bill. So, by offering a no incentive, 100%, we, it's a win-win for everybody. The landlord is improving their their structures or as and the person who pays the electric bill is getting an overall lower bill and a more efficient and more comfortable place to to live. Customers making below 60% of the state median income are eligible for 100% offer. And that includes a discount on your overall electric bill of over 30%. And that's on the ever-source total bill. So, if you are, and we have, you know, the where you fit into what category are posted on our website. So, you can check to see if you're eligible for these. So, there's a overall discount. It's about fuel assistance. We also will help with 100% replacement cost for heating systems, as well as appliance upgrades and weatherizing and air sealing your house. So, again, I strongly encourage you to look at our website to see where you fall on the spectrum of income eligibility, because there's a lot, a lot we have to offer. Next slide. I think when I know that I spoke about CVO when I was talking about the next three-year plan. The Cape and Vineyard Electrification Offering was proposed in 2018 to the Department of Public Utilities. It was not approved, but it was not denied. What they asked us to do was to continue to do more customer and consumer education, as well as scale down the project. So, we scaled it down from 700 to 250. And the focus of CVO is to is to focus on 250 non-natural gas heated homes. So, again, delivered fuels, oil, propane, electric resistance homes, and to move them off of fossil fuels, install heat pumps. And again, we're looking at deed-restricted properties from from 80, below 80%. So, these are customers that you're still putting them on electric heat, even though it's a high-efficient heat, our electric rates are still high. So, we are proposing to pair them with solar so that their overall, to get them almost to be a net zero home, and then also install a battery for participation in our demand response program, as well as resiliency. Because what we have, what we discovered when we were looking out is customers were are not, our low and moderate income customers are not installing solar. They're not participating in the solar market. They're being left behind because of the high upfront cost to participate in these programs. And what CVO does is it goes out to bid and brings in a third party for the first 10 years to own and operate all of these systems so that we can maximize the accelerated depreciation, the investor tax credits, and the smart tariffs. And then at the end of that period, these, both the heat pump... And then at the end of that period, these, both the heat pumps, the solar PV system and the battery remain with the property and the homeowner to continue to benefit from those incentives. Next slide. USDA, we were, actually, last year, we were informed that the USDA has a loan program. And the Cape Light Compact Board authorized us to submit a letter of interest in May, almost a year ago, to RUS. And we were invited to submit a full loan application, which we filed in December of 2020, for four-point-nine million dollars. And what this would do would be, it is a zero-interest twenty-year loan to the Cape Light Compact. And we in turn would propose to establish a solar loan program for residents and small businesses on Cape Cod and Martha's Vineyard. And the loan amount would be up to fifty thousand dollars. The interest rate at right now is two-point-two-five. We hope to get it a little bit lower, so it's below any market rate that's commercially available. And then the term of a loan is ten years to the borrower. And that's dictated by RUS. As I said, that application was submitted on December twenty-seventh, and we are pending, waiting to hear back from US, RUS, USDA as to whether or not we will get final approval for this loan program. Again, to create something, there's a vacuum. Mass CEC used to do a solar loan program, but they stepped away from that. So there's nothing available, they used to do a low-interest loan. So there are no law, the only thing that's available is a commercial loan product. So we are trying to, again, create, serve a need for our customers. So next slide. Green Communities, so Falmouth just received their designation award. Congratulations. And Margaret Song from Cape Light Compact provides technical assistance to the town of Falmouth and several other towns. And your, I understand your designation is about almost a hundred ninety thousand dollars. So that's, that's great news. And we will be here to continue to help with your reporting and other needs as so required of us. Next slide. I wanted to just give a heads up on our Cape Light Compact power supply pricing. This is our pricing, we are competitive with ever-source basic service. We also offer an opt-in local green. Where we match customers load with recs that are produced locally from many of the solar municipal projects on the Cape and the vineyard. And I think that is my last slide. The next one, yes. I know I went through this very fast and a lot of information, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Maggie. That was great. It always surprises me every single time, everything that Cape Light Compact does and all the programs that are out there. So I appreciate you going through it. Any questions for Maggie? Go ahead, Doug Brown.
What's the cap on the heating system replacement, Maggie? I didn't quite catch that.
Under which, so right now, the heat loan cap, so there isn't a cap per se. I mean, the system costs what it is, but heat loan is twenty-five thousand dollars for a market-rate customer, for a income-eligible customer. So it's going to be somebody below sixty percent. There's no cap. If replay, if your heating system is being replaced, the cost is what the cost. And we leverage not only ratepayer funds, but other federal dollars as well. The rebates average, depending upon whether you're doing a heat pump, that's about a five-thousand-dollar rebate. And I think natural gas heating system rebates are around three.
And I thought I heard you say that if you're income-eligible, you would actually pay the cost of the replacement of the heating system?
Yes, that is correct. And that's not anything new. That's been going on for twenty, twenty years.
Yeah, I did, I did that years ago on a house that had electric baseboard heat. And I found it to be unbelievable that it was true. They said if I could keep the cost under seven thousand dollars, that I might qualify to have the whole thing paid. And it turned out it worked out, and it was converted to natural gas. And so there's still similar programs, but now it's heat pumps, I guess.
Yep, yes, we're actually looking town by town where we're working with assessors' data. So we really know where, where are, who's still on electric resistance heat, who's on oil, who's on propane. And of course, all of the vineyard and the outer Cape are served only by those three. And that's where our focus will be, to try to help them because heat, you know, heat pumps will lower their overall energy bills because they're oil and, they're just expensive.
I guess, I thought I knew something about this program, but I didn't even realize about the refrigerator rebate. Just bought a new fridge last month and I missed my.
Oh, no. Yeah, you know, it took us a while, but we, you know, because of COVID, but they were up and running by the summer and still recycling refrigerators and freezers. Then hopefully, we can have larger gatherings. We'll get back to doing some dehumidifier turn-in events and all the, and AC events as well.
So that's pretty amazing. You'll pay seventy-five dollars plus come and take the fridge away.
Yes.
And I had to pay twenty-five for the guys to take it away. Lost a hundred bucks. I guess, I guess the bottom line is we should call Cape Light Compact before doing anything.
Yes. Is, and any other questions for Maggie? That's great. Thank you so much, Maggie. We really appreciate it. And when you do, you know, when you kind of shift and start maybe doing the, the humidifier and ACs, even if you just let us know, and we can make that announcement. Because, you know, folks are always, they have those things in their basements that they're waiting to get rid of, and, you know, certainly a better way to get rid of it, to go through you guys. So we appreciate it.
Great. I most definitely will let Peter and Julian know. And I know Ron, who used to attend your meetings with, you know, the eight-hundred number to call for an audit. So looking forward to being able to see everybody, hopefully sometime in the next year, in person.
Yay, great. Thank you so much, Maggie. Really appreciate it. Take care.
Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
You too.
Thanks for all your good work.
Bye now.
Excellent. Now we have, I just want to go over two quick items before we have our cable advisory committee. We had two items on our agenda, number seven and number eight. And due on number seven to the individual, it was Matt Patrick, asked to come and speak on that and have a discussion. He is not going to be available tonight, so we're going to postpone that agenda item so that we can be efficient with our time and have town staff answer any questions he has and discuss that. So I just wanted to let folks know in case somebody's staying up to see some of these. We are going to postpone number seven. And number eight, EDIC, their consultant is not available this evening. So that is another, they notified us this afternoon, and we will have to choose another date when their consultant is available. So seven and eight on our agenda, we won't be getting to this evening. Okay, next, we are going to hear from Cable Advisory Committee. Welcome, Michael.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, you guys have a long night.
Yeah, always.
And I'm not a big fan of Zoom right now, as Nancy will tell you. Anyway, I think you have a report in your packet. I don't want to sort of read it, but basically, currently, we are three members of a five-member committee. So we desperately could use two additional members, Jay Zavala, Robert Naskali, and myself as chair. When we're not negotiating a new license, primarily what we do is serve as liaison for cable customers who are having problems. In the last few months, we've been contacted by four individuals, three of which we were able to help, the fourth we couldn't do anything about because they were just beyond the limit of what the license gave them in terms of things. So that's a big role. But the, but where we really sort of come into action is when we are negotiating a new license. And that is currently happening now. Our current license expires October thirty-first. It's not, I think, a hard date. It will just continue until we negotiate a new one. But, but that's sort of the goal, is to work towards that. The, the sort of, we sort of started following sort of the pattern what we did ten years ago with regards to looking at what towns were doing for a survey, looking at what other towns were getting in their licenses. We were then, the town hired an attorney, William Solomon, who has given us very sort of direct guidance and talked a lot about Falmouth. We're, we're, we in a town of Falmouth are in a sort of a, only a handful of communities that have a very sophisticated community access television program, FCTV. So, so the aspect of ascertainment where the town sort of wants to figure out what is it we need is, is simplified because, because basically, FCTV provides what the town needs. And I think there's not, I think this, this board has consistently supported FCTV and what they're doing. FCTV, you know, so basically, with possibly the one exception we should have put outside of FCTV, which is the Customer Service Office, you know, we basically look to FCTV to provide what it is we want to get from our franchise fees and things that we get from the cable provider. One of the other aspects of ascertainment, which we will tackle in the, in the upcoming ascertainment hearing, is to get some feedback about how people feel Comcast is, is providing the service they provide. The, the reality of the problem is there isn't a lot we are able to do. We can't talk really much about their programming. I mean, we can make suggestions, and we've done that in the past. And they've been pretty compliant with that in a sense. But we, we can't talk about pricing, we can't talk about internet, we can't talk about telephone, we can't talk about alarm systems. We can only basically say, as permitted by statute, you know, as providers of cable service, using our rights of ways, the, the law allows, allows us to collect fee, you know, to basically put on top of their contract fees to support, support the services the town wants and needs. And I think, and I, you know, I'm not going to go into it. We're going to talk a lot about it in our ascertainment hearing. And the one thing I'm going to ask of this board is to, to tell everyone about the ascertainment hearing. But I think especially during this time of COVID, everyone knows the, the, you know, FCTV has provided a lot of services. They provide a lot of information. So I think, you know, I think there's, as I said, you know, I'm, I'm not on the FCTV board. I'm impartial, but, but we look to FCTV to be our resource with the fees and things that we collect. So we're now negotiating with Comcast. You know, I did in my report bring up that, that, you know, that often the Cable Advisory Committee participates in those negotiations. We only learned in our most recent meeting that, that those negotiations would be just with, between Jennifer Mullen and the attorney, talking to Comcast. And that, that, there's a lot of discussion about that. We unfortunately, as I think I mentioned, we were supposed to have a quite important meeting to talk about the ascertainment hearing and some of these issues tonight, only to have I, have Zoom fail us and not be able to connect, connect with that. But, you know, so, you know, so one of the things I wanted to bring to the attention of the board, well, I'm going to start with, one of the, the report, I guess, is important to say is that we only get money to support FCTV through, through cable television. So none of the other things that Comcast provides give funding to FCTV. So as I think everyone is aware, more and more video television services, not just Netflix, but there's all sorts of services to actually get ABC, NBC broadcast channels over the internet, they don't pay any fees to the town. So, so the, the reality is, as a technical person, I know there's been discussion about having our own town fiber network. I have, I have a child who lives in Boston. He gets quite a bit faster than I do at less than half the price because of competition. But, you know, and, and select board member Doug Brown raised this issue. We have a lot of technical, technical issues we're going to have to start discussing because we have to understand that I think in this ten-year period, we're going to see a large shift off of cable and onto internet services, which is going to impact the funding for things like FCTV, you know, whether it be our own network, or I used to be in the mobile, mobile phone business. I have people who think that, that 5G networks are going to be providing high-speed connectivity in the future. So, so there's not, there's no question, there's a lot of discussion. Whether that discussion, that discussion is not unfortunately really relevant to the license because there's nothing we can do about that. But I understand it and understand what that future is going to bring. So the one thing I did want to say is that, so as I mentioned in our most recent meeting, there was discussion about who would be representing the town in the negotiations with Comcast. And we had considerable discussion about that, and I was hoping to take a vote tonight because, because, you know, we, there's a lot of questions of myself and other members of the board as to how that decision was made, who represents that, represents that. But, but so unfortunately, since we couldn't take a vote, I'm going to have to basically make a recommendation to the board on my own, in a sense, coming from me. But I think, I think we should seriously consider asking Debbie Rogers, because of her experience with cable licensing and understanding where other towns have gotten with licenses and being involved in that whole thing, to also participate and represent the town with these negotiations. You know, I think as FCTV director, she's, she's really uniquely qualified to understand the town's needs, and I'd like to sort of inject that as the board. As I said, we will continue, we will have an ascertainment hearing. I think the currently, the plan is to have it on May nineteenth. If the board can find any new members for us, that'd be a big help because we have to have quorum to do that. And that, that basically covers what I think was in my report and what I wanted to say.
Great. Thank you, Michael. So let me start with that piece. I don't know that we'll have them by May nineteenth, because it probably doesn't give us much time. But I do think, Julian, can we be sure that we go out again and have Diane publish for those two positions? So that we can try to get a full, you know, full compliment on this committee?
Certainly. We, we've carried those vacancies in the past, but we'll make certain that we get them out there again. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess what I would start with is that last piece that Michael raised, which would be the thoughts that this board has on, on Deb Rogers participating in, in some capacity in the ascertainment process. I do know, I did a little bit of just trying to find out what happened because obviously this happens so infrequently that it's, you know, it's a decade. So I think the last time it happened, I do believe that she was, you know, sort of involved in the conversation too. She's been doing this for thirty years. So I think at that point, Town Manager Bob Rittenhour did have her sort of weighing in, just so that we, we don't get caught not knowing what we don't know. You know, that she's kind of speaks that language of, of cable and, you know, understanding kind of the ins and outs. So I do think that she had participated in the past, is my understanding, as well as somebody at that point in time from the committee. So I would be interested in hearing the thoughts from Jen and Julian on that, as well as from the board. Because it is, it is going to happen pretty quickly. So I want to make sure that we do maximize any leverage, any potential, you know, that we, as little as it may be, that we do have. So go ahead, Jen, if you want to.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, when Falmouth negotiated the license ten years ago, it was done regionally, because I represented Chatham ten years ago because I sat in on negotiations, and it was Heather Hopper. And so there was about four or five, actually, Peter was involved too from Yarmouth. And so there was about four or five towns, and we had council represented it, represented, and we, and we started to negotiate that license. I believe in the beginning, I did speak with Heather Hopper about this recently, just to get the, make sure I had my facts straight. So ten years ago, they did bring Deb Rogers in and kind of consulted with her, but I think she was brought into the negotiations more at the end than in the beginning. The problem, I don't believe, from what I hear, the Cable Advisory Committee did not negotiate the license ten years ago. It was Heather, and she did consult with Debbie. One of the issues of having a committee do active negotiations is, it's just something, you know, Falmouth hasn't done. We don't have any committees, you know, with the, we have a strong town charter, and having a committee involved, you'd have to make all negotiations public. You'd have to post all the meetings. We've already started negotiations. And so that's typically, you know, how it's done, you know, from what.
Yeah, I want to sort of step, put the piece back about the committee because I don't think, to be honest, with a committee of three, I, I don't even think that, I think Michael puts his finger on the fact that even if we were going to do that, which I think I absolutely agree, Jen, is a complete shift in how we negotiate. But even if for some reason the board were inclined to go in that direction, I don't think that that committee, in its current iteration, it's just, you know, it's not going to work. If somebody can't make, if they don't have, you know, if somebody's not available on that day, it's pretty hard when you only have three people, and, and that's, you know, that's, that's pretty tough. So I, I think it was more in line of the thought about whether having Deb Rogers, you know, you know, as a resource there to help us in that process. I think that was more.
Yeah, okay. Let me just, and so I will tell you that the, in the beginning of this, probably it was like a year and a half ago when I spoke with Peter and Julian about, you know, who would rep, who would be the liaison. We actually did confer, um, confer with Frank because we were thinking, you know, Debbie representing, you know, the town. However, this is the issue, the license is with the town of Falmouth and Comcast. And so we have interest as well. And we thought there might be a little bit of a conflict if we gave the whole, if we let Debbie do the whole negotiation. That was the question, could she do the negotiation? Cause she knows and she has the support of the board and that would be a bit of a conflict. It does get tricky though, because we are, it is unique because, because FCTV does provide all the services that we're negotiating for. However, we do have some interest for the town that, um, we want to make sure gets addressed as well and the license is with the town. But we, yes, we definitely want to, I definitely want to have conversations with, um, Debbie Rogers as well. But we, we've had two meetings so far with Comcast. They're going to have the ascertainment hearing in the middle of May and then we'll meet with Comcast again. And I believe there'll be a representative at that meeting and I, yeah, and I have been and will continue to, and actually have more in-depth conversations with, with Debbie from FCTV.
Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, my thought wasn't Deb running it. That, I don't think that would be appropriate, but more along what you're, you're talking about is really having her give input along the way. Because again, it's, you know, that is her sort of, that's her language, that's her primary language. And so, you know, I think she can, can take a look at it in a way that, um, you know, she brings a certain lens to it. Sam, you had your hand up?
Yes, I, I know the school department also uses that cable access. So are they being included in terms of making sure they're represented?
Yes, I believe, yes, they are. Um, a lot of that is with, um, the, we've been talking to them about the drops and being able to, um, broadcast live from the school department. So they have been consulted, yes.
Okay. But I think also to add to that though, there, there is a full-time person, I think is, if I'm correct, is paid by the school department, but is actually under sort of debt staff who, who helps also with the, the school negotiations. And again, just to be clear, so as you said, the vast majority, you know, 99.9% of, of what is collected from Comcast goes to FCTV that represents the town and FCTV has contracts with the town and the FCTV is, is basically doing for the town what we want them to be doing. We're just saying that, you know, because this Deb is a professional and we have her as a, as a person involved there, that, that she should also be participating in the actual negotiations with Comcast. That's, that's what we're saying. You would be there too, Jennifer, certainly representing the town. We have the attorney, um, you know, the attorney has, has reflected that that's no problem and in some towns with the sophisticated community access, just the community access people negotiate the contract. We're not asking that, we're saying just that we think because she brings a level of understanding and expertise, it makes natural sense to make sure that she's, her eyes and ears are there. And, and 10 years ago, it was not such an issue because we were seven or eight towns, seven lawyers, we were all sort, you know, cable advisory committees, it would have been, you know, it was harder. We had many eyes looking at a contract, developing a single contract for the region. Now we're going it alone and we should take advantage of all those resources and expertise we can. And, you know, I, I, I said, you know, I said, I don't think it needed to be me because Deb is the one who's the most qualified for that kind of thing.
Any other, yep, Doug Brown?
I'd like to support that idea. I, I don't see any why, reason why Deb Rogers couldn't be in attendance and just, you know, mentioning to our staff, things that she might notice along the way. Not that she's actually going to be the direct negotiator, but just sort of a, a backup. And, uh, another thing I think we need to address, and I don't think we're prepared to tonight, but the long-range problem of the shift to internet-based media is going to significantly reduce the revenue. And I think we need to petition the legislature for a change in the law, if that's what it takes, because by the time 10 years comes, it's going to be very little cable service being used.
Well, we may be in a really different, we may have a really different, uh, you know, we're certainly going to have a different model by then because it's already changing. This, this particular process is already somewhat outdated, um, for where we are now. But I think even more of a reason why we have to maximize what we can at this point because we know there'll be some challenges as we go forward. Anything else from the board on this thought? Any other, so in terms of Jennifer, um, you reaching out to Deb and having her kind of, you know, be able to be a resource and, and participate along with you, any stumbling blocks there with that? I mean, I'm sure she's willing, I can't speak for her, but my guess is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, so, I, I mean, I have consulted with her, I wanted to consult with her again. So is it the wish of the board that she actually sits in negotiations with us? I just would want to talk to Frank again about that. So you want her at the table?
Um, I don't want to speak for the board. I don't want to speak for the board, but I think that's what Doug Brown was saying. Any other comments from the members of the board as to that question from Jen?
Well, let me, that's really our application of the community access, right? I mean, she, she's the face of what is delivered to the town. So I think it only makes sense to me that she should be at least party to the, the discussions, uh, the negotiations. She and, and the school department are the two users of that opportunity.
Um, she'll, no, she is part, I just want to know who's going to be in the meeting with Comcast. I want to just talk to Frank again, just to follow up on the conversation I had with him before, because there's a difference whether she's coming in and actually actively negotiating a license for the town, but she's, doesn't work for the town. That's my, that's my concern. But I mean.
If you could just, do you want to just send an email out, Jennifer?
Sure.
And, and just loop me in on that with Frank? But it sounds like from at least three members of this board and if Nancy or Doug Jones want to weigh in, please do. But it sounds like three of us are at least saying we would like her to be in on the negotiations. So maybe just get some clarity from Frank.
As an advisor, she doesn't have to be a negotiator.
Right.
But just an advisor.
But I understand what Jen's saying. She wants some clarity.
Yeah, let me just be clear, when you're sitting and you're negotiating and she's advising and they're sitting there, she's going to be negotiating. Because you can't just advise me when the negotiator is there. You know what I mean? It's really a controlled environment. They have things on the table, we have things on the table. There's an angle that we want to get to. And of course she's, you know, definitely in those conversations. But if she's going to be at the table, then she's going to be actively negotiating for the license for the town. And that's why I'm asking that specific question. It's hard to have somebody sit at the table and just be an advisor and not actively negotiate.
So I think we can get that clarity from, from Frank.
The only thing I went out though is that we have hired a professional attorney and we have now a town attorney, William Solomon, whose expertise is cable. Um, I can talk to him. I don't think he has an objection because he had, he had said that there was an option to just let FCTV negotiate when we talked about this when, back many months ago.
Yeah, but just to, not to interrupt, Michael, but our town council said FCTV couldn't do the negotiations because it's a town license. So we might have a dual opinion.
We're just saying, we're just saying that, that, that the attorney turns to Deb for most of the technical questions. How do you do this? What do you do? And, and it's just, it just, he's going to do most of the negotiation, but having her there at the tables and resource just is common sense. And I, and I don't, I can't see any issue with that since, since she is the town and does what the town wants and her, but what's good for FCTV is what is ultimately the town is looking for.
Yeah, so we'll just get some way in from our town council about that, that piece of it. But I think that Jen has the, and Julian has the sort of direction that this board is looking for and we'll get some follow-up about that. Julian, anything in specific?
I was just going to affirm what you just indicated, that we have the temperature of the board and we'll, uh, clarify, you know, the, the details with town council and look forward to, uh, moving, moving ahead with this. Thank you.
Thank you. And then actually Jennifer, if you could just copy Nancy Taylor, because that's her committee. So maybe just copy her on your communications with Frank, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll do that. Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so we're not doing seven or eight. We are going to now have an announcement discussion of Sandwich Road Fire Station Building Committee and the adoption of a mission statement. Mr. Suso.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I included in the board's packet, a suggested mission statement for a, uh, for the suggested Sandwich Road Fire Station Building Committee. And I just bring it to, to the board in draft form. Uh, if the board is comfortable with having such a committee, and I certainly recommend that, um, we could, uh, announce it, uh, subject to your preferences on the mission of that committee and, uh, begin advertising and, uh, bring candidates to you, uh, within a reasonable timeframe so we can keep this, uh, time-sensitive project moving forward.
I had a question. Is that composition and term language similar to what we use for the senior center?
Yeah, to the best of my knowledge it is. I don't have the senior centers piece in front of me, uh, but we had people who had hands-on experience, I know that. Uh, it wasn't all actually, uh, uh, construction management, but it was people who was involved, who were involved in financing, uh, as well, uh, as the, the financial piece. But it was, it proved invaluable in terms of us being able to move forward. We did have more than five members on that committee. I just mentioned five as a starter, um, that the board may determine that you have sufficient qualified candidates, that you want to have a, a larger number. But five seemed like a, a good number to move forward, uh, expeditiously because as we know, just as a reminder, we are out to, uh, uh, we're advertising in central register already for the owner's project manager with town meetings, having approved that appropriation. And, uh, the, uh, building committee would work with us and the OPM in selecting the project architect and moving the process forward so that we can be to town meeting in April of next year and hopefully on the ballot in May with the board's concurrence and, uh, town meeting as well.
Thank you. Doug Jones? And then Sam?
I noticed it says up to five in the description right now. I certainly think five would be the very minimum. I'd be more comfortable with saying up to seven, where five is an option to us and we could go up to seven if we have more people to come up forward.
Uh, Sam, go ahead.
I, I participated in a number of building committees and I think it's, uh, this is pretty much follows that model. And I, I, I think it's really the quality of the people you have on there and not necessarily the number. I mean, a smaller group can be a little bit more agile. Um, but, uh, I have found these committees to be very valuable in making sure that these projects are completed within the budget or in the time schedule. There's only been one notorious one where that failed and, and there were some state regulation reasons that predisposed it to failure. But I think, uh, this is an appropriate way to, to really look out for the interests of the citizens of the town.
I would agree with Mr. Jones, uh, it should be five to seven.
Or, or up to seven.
Yeah.
Up to seven. And I guess the only thing I would ask Julian, could we just look back maybe at that, that language? I, I mean, I like the idea of having practitioners with hands-on experience in the actual building and construction process. I mean, I guess whatever the language is, I just want to make sure, like you said, we had some folks who have kind of had worked on some procurement pieces, the financing pieces. You know, we had some folks that came at it from that end. So I just would want to make sure that the language was clear, that we're inviting those people in as well. And it might be that I'm just reading it narrowly and, and I'm just thinking of people just in the, in the building construction trade. But I thought it was very, our, our senior center, um, group was a really well-balanced, um, group of people that had a lot of experience, like you said, both financially with big projects as well as kind of from that construction standpoint.
Certainly, I, I see a construction procurement as being part of the construction process. So we can certainly clarify that further.
Just maybe put the word procurement in there, just so that it, it kind of rings the bell for people.
Certainly.
Uh, Doug Brown?
So as we move one more step closer to constructing this fire station, I just want to reiterate my, my concern about our big picture for fire station staffing. And I really want to have that discussion about what our staffing levels will be at the time when this station is built.
It'd be on our next agenda. You, you stole my last line, which was.
All right.
Just to let the public know, we are going at our next, we didn't do it tonight because we had a full agenda, but our next meeting, uh, we are going to be having a discussion and, um, uh, we'll have the fire chief here about a five version versus, excuse me, six station model. Okay? And, and, and having that, not that we make a decision and vote it, but having that discussion, inviting that debate about exactly what you're putting your finger on, Doug. I think every member of this board has brought it up at, at one point in time, you know, the need to have this broader discussion. So we are doing that at our upcoming meeting. Nancy?
Could I ask that we include something that, um, compares our salaries for firemen to the surrounding towns? I'd be very curious to see where we are with that.
Sure.
So for, request that?
Yep. So for the, for the, the upcoming meeting, when we talk about five versus six, Julian, just having a, uh, when we talk about kind of the staffing component of that, maybe just have a, a sense of where we fall, um, in line with kind of regional payment, pay scale, basically.
And, and maybe also we should be considering our retention, uh, levels and comparative to other towns, if that's appropriate.
I think that's what I'm, one of the pieces I'm trying to get at. When we can, um, get new firemen, are we keeping them? And if we aren't, are they going to other towns because the money is, is better? So that's exactly what I'm thinking now. Thank you.
Okay. Um, and back to this particular issue, any other recommendations for Julian on the wording of this? Okay, do I have a vote to accept this, uh, with what, with the clarifications we just made, this mission statement and to, um, advertise for the positions for this, um, committee?
Don't move.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Yeller?
Yeller, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great, thank you Julian for putting this together, moving it forward. We appreciate it. Okay, next, um, we have, whoops. Request for sign variance, off-premises signs, Falmouth Commodores game day signs. Any question about this?
I move approval, I move approval, Jones?
Okay.
Patterson, second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Yeller?
Yeller, aye.
Okay, requests for, uh, sign variance, off-premise signs, Falmouth Commodores Baseball Clinic.
I move approval, Jones?
Patterson, second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Uh, English Braga, aye. Next we have annual reappointment of inspectors of animals. This is for a term running May 1, 2021 until April 30th, 2022.
Jenna Silva? Jessica Gao and Scott McGannan, all as inspector of animals.
Patterson, second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay, we're going to approve 2021 annual seasonal license renewals. I will read them as the motion and then if someone can just, um, second them at the end, if you want to hold one, please let me know. Lodging house license, Captain Lawrence Inn, 75 Locust Street, Falmouth. Woods Hole Inn, 28 Water Street, Woods Hole. Woods Hole Passage, 186 Woods Hole Road, Falmouth. Second-hand dealer license, Cape Cod Gold and Silver, 424 Main Street, Falmouth. Cash Point, 350 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. Falmouth Service Center, Hand in Hand Thrift Shop, 141 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth. Harmony Hut Repair, 105 Spring Bars Road, Falmouth. Home Again, 93 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth. Bowling Alley Pool Table License, Grumpy's Pub, 29 Locust Street, Falmouth. Trade Center Bowl, 89 Spring Bars, Falmouth.
Second, Jones?
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion, seeing none by roll call, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
English Braga, aye. Okay, uh, the minutes are still being prepared, I believe. English Braga, aye. Okay. Uh, the minutes are still being prepared, I believe. And so we have, um, selectmen's report, even though it's not in there. Um, go ahead, Doug. Jones?
Uh, I'll report on the meeting that, uh, Doug Bryan and I were at last week of the traffic management committee, uh, dealing with some steamship authority issues. Um, two major items to talk about. One is the, uh, legislation that Sue Moran has put forward to change a little bit of the voting procedure, uh, for the steamship authority. I just want to make sure it's very clear. People understand that what she's suggesting is that to pass, you have to have one of the mainland towns also agree, uh, for any motion. That right now the, all the islands still have the majority and they can pass without a single mainland town voting in favor of it. But this will require that one of the mainland towns also approved. Doesn't mean the mainland towns can pass anything without the island's approval. So any idea that the town, mainland towns could put forward something new? Any island town can veto it and prevent it from happening. But just gives a little bit more say for the mainland towns and they just need to get one of them to jump in. Uh, the second question was talked a good deal about and the traffic management committee has not come up with a recommendation on this one yet. Is the potential closing of Cowdery Road uh, in Woods Hole, uh, to truck traffic from 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM? And they're going to discuss that further, um, and at the same time ask the steamship authority to consider eliminating their 5:30 AM freight boat.
And I had a, a different take on, I, I don't know if I'm right about this, but I thought that she said she was gonna, in her bill was going to request that our individual towns' vote would change from 10 to 15%. And then that would only give us to 45. So in fact, I think we would need some island town to vote with us in order for us to block anything. And there's a, somebody made a, a, an article about it, saying that this would effectively veto any legislation. And I don't see how that's possible at 45%, unless I don't understand the voting.
I didn't think she was changing the percentage. I thought it was just that they had to have a mainland town vote in addition.
I'll have to read it again. I think it's changing from 10 to 40 to 15%, which would only bring
The mainland islands, mainland towns would not have a majority.
Right. And I think that's what it is, but I'd have to check it again. Anyways, it was interesting that she brought this idea forward. Should I go next since I'm already interrupting?
Doug Brown, yep.
So the, uh, the Assembly of Delegates has a new, uh, county administrator, Beth Albert. And she seems really sharp and I'm happy and that I, I did watch the interviews with the, uh, three candidates. I thought she seemed to be the best. So I'm glad that they chose her. And the, um, County Dredge was awarded $58,000 in supplemental funding for this year to make sure they complete their tasks. Uh, we got a new executive assistant appointed to take Beth Albert's, uh, you know, fill in the role that she left in the human services. Um, those are the highlights. Ken Krillo affirmed that he is now implementing the new, uh, dredge rates. And the new crew members are in place. So the dredge is moving along swiftly, I guess, doing pretty well. Um, what else did I have to tell you about? Climate action plan for a regional policy plan was all approved. There were some petitioners against it. They wanted more, uh, more green stuff in it, but the county commission decided not to, uh, accept those petitions. And they've already implemented a lot of measures that they've helped address that. Uh, the waterways committee is getting a ton of requests for dredging and they got a lot of new projects that are coming. And it's going to be an, uh, a significant amount of money that's going to be required to be committed if we want to maintain all these waterways. It's the, the, uh, I don't know if it's the sea level rise or the frequency and the intensity of storms, but our channels are being blocked much more swiftly than in the past. And it's, it's highly unpredictable. So we're going to have to really think about our, uh, waterways committees requests and, and anticipate some significant funding requests for new dredging permitting projects. So projects that have traditionally, uh, harbors that have held their own against the tide are now suffering extraordinarily. So it's something to consider in the budget.
Right. Thanks. Thanks. Uh, Sam or Nancy, anything? Uh, go ahead, Sam.
And just to let you know that the Affordable Housing Committee has actually done a pretty good job of looking for alternative sources for subsidizing, um, affordable housing in Falmouth. Um, you know, the cost of properties have just leaped forward this past year, like increasing on the order of 25% higher in prices. So the, the affordable housing issue is really in a crisis mode. Uh, and then just to build new housing that's got a deed restriction on, you know, the cost of materials has gone up so much that, you know, relying strictly on the Community Preservation Act funds, it, it's just not going to help us. And, and there's a whole social equity issue relative to affordable housing. And you can see now you've got help wanted signs all over town. And, you know, I, people have to commute here in order to be able to provide us with the kind of employee services that we really want. So it's a, it's becoming more and more of an issue. And I just wanted to mention that, look out for that report. I thought they did a really good job of looking for other alternatives to, to help subsidize affordable housing and construction of it. So, oh, nope. Anyway. And, and then by the way, Doug, thanks for your contributions and passing them along from your contacts at the, at the county level. It was a very helpful.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you. Nancy?
I think I had two comments. One is I really want to call out Jill Irving Bishop for the, the amazing work that she is doing and her staff, um, through this COVID piece. And certainly with, um, seniors and also shut-ins. Um, I've been in contact with her a little bit over those issues and, and I just feel like her staff is doing an amazing job. My second piece would be out of the affirmative action committee, commission. Um, as you know, we got the, we got through the, um, the job description and that is out. The other pieces that they are now looking to have a facilitator come in and work on them, work with them on, uh, sort of group dynamics. And they have a very difficult task and they're, they're, um, what they talk about is difficult. And I think they've run into some stumbling blocks. So they're, they're looking for a facilitator to come in. And I, I really, um, appreciate and honor that that is work that they need to do.
Yeah. And, and, and hopefully we can, um, you know, work with Julian, with staff to see if we can try and help. Uh, I know they have some potential suggestions. Uh, the committee has some, but you know, certainly want to help in any way we can. Uh, we ask a lot of all of our committees. And so, um, you know, if we can have resources available to them to help them, you know, do the, the work that we ask them to do, certainly want to try and support that.
And I have been in contact with the town manager's office and Mr. Suso's been very supportive and given me some latitude to help them.
Great.
The goal of being a really healthy functioning mission.
Great. Thank you. Uh, my only announcement is I just want to say, um, congratulations to Mary Bunker Reither for, um, being hired by the town as our new recycling, um, solid waste coordinator for the position that, um, solid waste advisory has pushed for, for many, many years. And it was long in the making. Um, but I think we, uh, maybe it was meant to take that long because I think we got a perfect fit. Um, here's somebody who's already been doing this work, um, who already has connections within our community, is rooted here, um, and has a real passion. So, um, congratulations to Mary. You have a, a lot in front of you. Um, but also just, uh, you know, kudos to town management for, um, selecting, I, who, you know, someone who I think is going to be a real benefit to the town. Um, and it's exciting. Um, you know, when we, we see a new position created and see it filled with somebody, um, that has a lot of energy and passion, that's really exciting. And, and, uh, we'll be expecting to, um, you know, see great things. So, um, just congratulations to her.
I'll second that. She's going to have us all composting.
Yes. Good. Town managers report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, yeah, we're very happy to have, uh, Mary join us. So we're pleased that she was an applicant for this important position. So, uh, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, what lies ahead. I wanted to, uh, acknowledge that, uh, this Thursday, April 28th to 10:00 AM is the Police Awards Recognition and Swearing In Ceremony. That's going to be held in the Memorial Garden in front of the, uh, police station. So, uh, the board has gotten a notification on that in the past, if your schedules so allow. And the board's next, uh, regular business meeting is Monday, May 10. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Patterson, second.
All those in favor? Brown?
Brown, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Yeller?
Yeller, aye.
English Braga, aye. Great. Thank you all. Good night.
Thanks.